Good morning. I'd like your meeting started. Going for our labor update. Jennifer?
Good morning, Mayor, members of the City Council. Jennifer Schembry, Deputy Director of Employee Relations. We have two proposals to present to you today. One from AMSP and Camp and the other from the Police Officers Association. So, starting with the proposal from AMSP and Camp. This was a counterproposal to the city's wage and term proposal. We received this from them on May 17th. It is a two-year term with a 7.5 percent general wage increase over the term of the MOA. The first year would be a 5 percent general wage increase effective July 1, 2013. Then they're also proposing to increase the top of the salary range by 5 percent effective July 15, 2013, but with no automatic increase. And then another 2.5 percent general wage increase effective July 1, 2014. Moving to a counterproposal that we received from the Police Officers Association yesterday. They are proposing, over two years, a 10.7 percent wage increase. So, in the first year, it will be a 5 percent wage increase. The second year, another 5.7 percent wage increase. In addition to that, they are also proposing a 3 percent retention bonus that would be one time in the second year. They're also asking for leave buydown of 80 hours ongoing each year. They did propose a contingency that had not been in their previous proposals, but it is contingent on sales and property tax, and it is only tied to the leave buydown for one year. So, if our sales and property tax increase was less than 3 percent, that leave buydown of 80 hours would be suspended for one year, but they would still receive the wage increases and the retention bonus. Also, as part of their proposal was a counterproposal on sick leave payout. They are agreeing to the city's proposal for current employees to freeze the hours. However, they've proposed a different sick leave payout for the accrued, the new sick leave hours that be accrued, and this would also be effective for new employees. So, under certain conditions, they would get sick leave available for cash out, actually on an annual basis, not at retirement. And they've also proposed a zipper clause in agreement that we would make no changes to sick leave payout for five years. On overtime and compensatory time for overtime worked, they are proposing that the employee chooses between cash and comp time, and they're also proposing that comp time be cashed out after 26 pay periods after it was earned. And that concludes the summary of both proposals. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no request to speak, so we're going to adjourn into closed session. We'll be back at 1:30.[175.65]
Three times, the soldier's name is called with no response. Watch with me, if you would, as the fellow soldiers go up before the upturned M-16 with a Kevlar helmet and a Kevlar vest on it and a pair of, set of dog tags, as they are pausing, reaching out and touching the helmet, or holding their brother's dog tags in their hand, as they say goodbye. Be shocked, I mean brought back with the sharp volleys of the rifle salute, hear the mournful playing of taps, and then follow the chaplain or watch the chaplain as he leads what is called a ramp ceremony, the flag draped coffin of their fallen soldier to the ramp of the helicopter to begin his journey home. And as that journey begins, all the soldiers remain at attention until the angel flight, as it's called, is out of sight. That's what Memorial Day is all about. Let's pray. Let's pause for a moment to remember and respect and care for the people in Oklahoma who are suffering so much right now. Almighty God, our hearts go out to our fellow citizens in Oklahoma who are suffering physical and emotional devastation from the tornado. We want to say thanks to those who've stepped up, their neighbors, not their neighbors, and those who've come to aid. We pray your comfort for the families who have lost loved ones and those who are waiting to learn the fate of others. Give them all strength during the rescue time, the recovery, and the time of rebuilding. And we pray for your guidance on those chosen to lead us as they tackle the thorny issues facing our city. May their debate be lively, the disagreements cordial, without ever forgetting that when the votes are cast, we're all on the same team. Help us to be mindful and thankful for the many who have been willing to give up their dreams on the battlefields of the world for the freedoms that we've always known. May we never forget that cost. In your matchless name, I pray, amen.
Thank you Pastor Ferguson. Next is Pledge of Allegiance, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
First item of the business are the orders of the day. We've moved things around on agenda to accommodate the addition of a study session completion, which we anticipate taking up at three o'clock or shortly thereafter on public safety items. So we moved a couple of things to the evening, that was item 7.1, 7.2. We also need to modify the evening agenda to take the one land use item, 11.4, first ahead of the other items we've just added to the agenda. And I want to add the city manager ahead of the ceremonials to make an announcement. I'm going to move the closed session report after the ceremonials. And then we have an item on the agenda, which is a motion for reconsideration of an item related to the sign code, which we would take up by, as item 4.1, if the council approves the motion or reconsider and putting on the agenda, which we need a two-thirds vote to do that. And then, of course, there was one, number, item was renumbered 218 from item 3.3 regarding environmental services. So I think those are the changes to the printed agenda that we need to discuss. Any others? We have a motion to approve the orders of the day, as noted with the changes, including the motion for reconsideration. On that motion, all in favor? Opposed? None opposed? Those items are approved. And that would then take us to the item I wanted to add ahead of ceremonials, city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm very pleased to announce that this morning, the city council ratified my appointments of VJ Semeta as our Chief Information Officer and Director of Information Technology, and Julie Edmonds-Morris as Director of Parks and Recreation and Neighborhood Services. Both VJ and Julie have been serving in acting capacity since 2011, and they have demonstrated steady and effective leadership during this period of transitional challenge for their departments and for our city. VJ has served as San Jose over the past two decades, holding a range of positions with increasing responsibility in information technology. Most recently Deputy Chief Information Officer, and over the years, manager in areas such as network operations, technical infrastructure, customer support, and in the early days, key roles at the airport in network operations and engineering. Also during his career, he worked for notable Silicon Valley technology firms, Hewlett Packard and McAfee. VJ has earned a well-deserved reputation as a creative and strategic problem solver, and he's been a great help to all of our departments as we meet the challenges presented by a fast-changing world of technology and the high expectations of our staff and our community. Joining VJ in the audience today are his father, Dr. Krishna Semeta, his sister, Rati Ahern, and his brother-in-law, Kevin Ahern, as well as supporters from the department. Julie and her PR&amp;S teams have a profound impact on the quality of life for the people in our neighborhoods who are passionate about their parks, senior centers, schools, and community centers. Especially over the last two years, Julie has led her teams to ensure that we can continue to provide the services essential for strong and healthy neighborhoods through innovation and engagement. I'm delighted that she'll continue as our director to lead PR&amp;S into the future. Julie joined the city in 2007 as its Assistant Director, and before coming here, she worked for the city of Tucson for nearly 12 years as Deputy Director of Budget and Research, Assistant to the City Manager, and Human Resources Administrator. Prior to her move to the public sector, Julie worked for United Airlines for over 11 years as an Airport Customer Service and Operations Manager. Joining Julie today in the audience are her son, Jason, and her daughter, Celia. I'm confident that with their appointments as our newest department directors, both VJ and Julie will be a great addition to our senior management team, and I know that they will contribute to our ability to serve the people of San Jose with energy and creativity. Please join me in congratulating them both, and I'd like to have them come down and briefly address the council and the community. Thank you.
Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, I'm deeply honored to be appointed as your Long Term Director for Parks, Recreation, and Neighborhood Services, and I look forward to working with you in the future as we continue to fulfill our mission to build healthy communities through people, parks, and programs. I'm incredibly proud of our PR&amp;S staff, particularly my leadership team. We enrich lives and improve the community's health and wellness, and our efforts are really a truly, a true reflection of combined efforts, not no one person alone. The PR&amp;S staff in general is really, is a team that's committed to offering high-quality services for every resident of San Jose, with a full spectrum and range of services from early childhood learning to older adult services. As you know, our services are intended to increase individual physical, mental wellness, and to provide safe environments for play focused on prevention, intervention, and success of the community. I have been equally impressed during my tenure with our many partnerships in the community. The programs and services we have today just would not be made possible without this dedicated, hard-working volunteers, community members, partners, communities-based organizations, and foundations, all of whom work collaboratively with our staff to continue to deliver services. On a personal note, I'd like to say thank you to my family for their support. My husband's in Peru with his mother, but my son, Jason, and daughter, Celia, and my extended family have been great support for me in my position. Moving forward, the PR&amp;S team will continue to focus on collaborations and innovations in service delivery with our residents, volunteers, and partners, again, building healthy communities. We will continue to focus our efforts on providing quality services and enrich the lives of everyone who lives, works, and plays in San Jose. Thank you for this opportunity to continue to serve the residents of San Jose.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, city council members, and city manager. I'm humbled by your confidence in me as the city's Chief Information Officer. Who knew nearly 20 years ago as a teenager, by accepting an internship at the airport as a means to get out of my parents' house, that I'd end up finding a home here in the city of San Jose at the same time? As any director will tell you, what makes them successful is the hard work and dedication of their staff quietly behind the scenes, and I really do have a wonderful staff. It makes it easy to come to work every day, and I'd like to publicly thank them at this time, and thank the IT staff as well as those staff in the department that make technology happen in the city. In addition, I'd like to thank my family for constantly putting up with me canceling personal plans on them in favor of work, but always calling to make sure that I'm okay. Well, the past few years have been challenging, to say the least. I believe we're at a transformative point with regards to technology at the city, and I'm excited to be given the opportunity to lead an innovative technology team that can only deliver projects that happen in the capital of Silicon Valley. As I frequently tell the city manager, I'm bullish about the technology prospects for the city and our community, and I thank you for your support. Thank you.
Now I'll take up the ceremonial items. I'd like to start by inviting Councilman Tru to join me at the podium as we present a proclamation regarding World Tobacco Free Day.
Thank my colleague and the mayor in joining me to proclaim May 31st as the World Free Tobacco Day. Every year, the tobacco-free initiatives of a world health organization and partners worldwide mark May 31st as the World Free Tobacco Day to highlight the health risk associated with the tobacco use and advocate for effective policies to reduce tobacco consumption. Tobacco use is the single most preventable cause of death globally and is currently responsible for killing one in 10 adults worldwide. The ultimate goal of World Free Tobacco Day is to protect the present generation and the future generation, not only from those devastating health consequences, but also against the social, environmental, and economic negative effect of tobacco use and exposure to tobacco smokes. In San Jose, the Methanol and Flavor Tobacco Prevention Project strives to prevent youth addiction by controlling access to products by regulating flavored tobacco product. In fact, last month, the city of San Jose passed a recommendation to support the Food and Drug Administration's Regulation of Methanol and Flavor Tobacco Product with the collaboration and effort from Methanol and Tobacco, Methanol and Flavor Tobacco Prevention Project include, many of the members are standing behind me this afternoon. The Methanol and Flavor Tobacco Prevention Project believes in being part of the solution in transforming communities to become sustaining health, environmental, environments for everyone. These volunteers are a very dedicated, diverse group of students, parents, and educators who have worked tirelessly to benefit their community in the city of San Jose. So I'm very happy and honored to be, ask the mayor to present the proclamation of May 31st as the World Free Tobacco Day to the members of Methanol and Flavor Tobacco Prevention Project.
So Mayor, could you please do the honors?
We have one proclamation and one commendation. Right, great.
Hello, city of San Jose, and hello, city council. My name is V Hong. I am a resident of San Jose District 2, the co-chair of the Mental Flavor Tobacco Prevention Program Work Group, and an alum of community advocate teams of today under Santa Clara County Public Health Department under the Tobacco Free Coalition. I am here to thank you, city council, for having us here, as well as addressing the great honor in celebrating the youth, young adults, and community that have taken action in creating a healthier community. We would like to thank you, San Jose City Council, for also supporting us and supporting the resolution and extending the efforts of urging the FDA to regulate youth tobacco products, especially the methanol-flavored tobacco products that have targeted youth as well. We would also like to extend a special thank you to Councilmember Ashkara, Councilmember Javier Campos, Councilmember Kenson Chu, and NAAC President Jeff Moore for the great Along with this accommodation, along with this commendation, we look forward to creating a healthier community and prioritizing the health of our youth especially. It has been a three-year-long journey, and working alongside these dedicated young adults have been such an honor and such a privilege. Again, thank you, San Jose City Council, and thank you, city of San Jose.
Next, I'd like to invite Councilmember Calra to hang around down here, and representatives from the Stroke Awareness Foundation and Good Samaritan Hospital to join me at the podium. Please come on down as soon as the path is clear. Today, we're presenting a proclamation declaring the month of May a Stroke Awareness Month in the city of San Jose. Stroke is the fourth-leading cause of death in the United States and a leading cause of long-term disability in adults. In San Jose, we benefited from the work that the Stroke Awareness Foundation has done to help residents recognize the signs and symptoms of stroke, and we want to congratulate and recognize San Jose's Good Samaritan Hospital for being certified as a comprehensive stroke center. This is the highest level of stroke care certification in the country, and only 33 such centers in the entire country. So congratulations and thank you. I think Dr. Paul Duprey, CEO of Good Samaritan Hospital, will have more to say.
Thank you, city council, and thank you, mayor, for this recognition for Good Samaritan Hospital and the Stroke Awareness Foundation. First of all, I'd like the team from Good Samaritan Hospital, please to stand up for just a minute. This is the stroke team. And this team is delighted to be able to offer the people from San Jose the absolute latest in both stroke and neurovascular care that's available in the country. As you can see, this type of achievement is only possible with a team effort, and every team needs a champion, and our champion was Dr. Harmeet Sastef. And Dr. Sastef will say a few words now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul. Honorable Mayor, council members, and ladies and gentlemen. Stroke is a bad disease. Every 40 seconds, somebody is paralyzed due to stroke. Every four minutes, somebody dies of stroke. Over 800,000 people have disability living in the United States from stroke. In 1996, Good Samaritan Hospital became the first hospital state of California to give intravenous medicine, a clotbuster medicine, to a 49-year-old person who was never going to be able to talk or walk again, and he recovered. And soon thereafter, the then Vice Mayor of San Jose, Patricia Dando, she also came to our hospital, and her recovery is amazing, everybody knows that. She did well. In 2003, Good Samaritan Hospital became the very first hospital in state of California, and among the first five to become primary stroke center. But since then, we've come long ways. We've been working hard, and at that time, we were able to treat the stroke patients only by giving intravenous medicine. But since then, we've been taking the guide wires through the ground, through the groin, all the way to the brain, and pulling the clots out, and even using teeny little balloons and coils and stopping the bleeding in the brain from aneurysms. Dr. Malik, our neurointervention doctor, he's a pioneer in that, and he's here. And this has then eventually led all of us to come to 2013. So we became one of the first community hospitals state of California now as a comprehensive stroke center. So comprehensive stroke center means what? That we are able to give a care much beyond the first three hours, even 12 to 24 hours. But we can help only those who come to our doors. To really get a comprehensive stroke care, the triage system has to be changed in the city of San Jose. People have to come to us for us to help. We have a dedicated, brand-new neuro ICU with ultra-modern technology. We are able to take care of the sickest of the sick and hopefully save their lives. And lastly, I want to mention that we are in the process of making a neuroscience institute with the help of Swenson. Mary Swenson is here, and with Stroke Awareness Foundation, and with HCA. And that will hopefully bring the stroke treatment in the city of San Jose and to the communities of San Jose at the latest, and we'll be able to render all that care in our service. Thank you.
Rocha and Calra, and members of the 2013 Affordable Housing Week Planning Committee to join us at the podium.
Thank you, mayor. And as many of you may know or not know, last week, the 12th through the 18th, we celebrated Affordable Housing Week in San Jose. And so I've asked Rebecca Garcia, Program Manager for the County of Santa Clara Office of Affordable Housing, and Stephanie Lahot, Development Manager, Housing Trust, Silicon Valley, to join us here today and along with my colleagues. Wayne Chen, Policy and Managing, and Planning Manager in our city's Housing Department, is here in the audience as well. And all of these folks were key members of the Planning Committee for Affordable Housing Week. Also, Silicon Valley Leadership Group, Benah Chang's not here today, but she's also part of that. And we want to thank all four of you for your efforts to organize the 2013 Affordable Housing Week. During the existence of San Jose's Redevelopment Agency, San Jose contributed 14,000 units of affordable housing for moderate and lower-income families and households, helping renters, homebuyers, families, seniors, and those with special needs. We're really proud of the work that we did in terms of affordable housing, but following the dissolution of the redevelopment agencies in 2012, the city, county, and our community partners faced significant challenges to preserve affordable housing programs. And so this need really underscores dedicating 2013 as a year of rebuilding and renewal, and this became the theme of this year's Affordable Housing Week. This means exploring new policy tools and strategies for implementing affordable housing and renewing the commitment to this issue. The need for affordable housing in Santa Clara County is important for a number of reasons. The San Jose metro area is one of the most expensive regions to live in the United States. We have the highest average gross rent in the nation and a median home sales price of $665,000. It's critical need for working families in San Jose. Approximately 175,000 employees in our city earn very low wages, and the California State Employment Development Department estimates that half of the new jobs created between 2008 and 2018 will be low-skill, low-wage jobs, making it especially difficult to afford to live here. This is a problem not only for our city but regional employers. High housing costs are consistently cited in annual surveys by CEOs as a challenge for our area employers to try and attract and retain talent. So in response, the Planning Committee coordinated a series of events throughout the county to highlight these challenges and opportunities to discuss these issues, and I'm going to let them talk about exactly all the things they did when we have Rebecca Garcia come up. But for all of your efforts to promote affordable housing in our city and county, I would like to ask Mary to present Rebecca Garcia and Stephanie Lahot with commendations. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Herrera. On behalf of the Planning Committee, including the city's Housing Department, the Housing Trust, and Silicon Valley Leadership Group, we'd like to thank everyone that participated in Affordable Housing Week. We hope to continue to raise awareness for the need for affordable housing in our community. When the city, the county, and all of our housing partners work together, we can achieve much more than any one of us could do alone. We need to continue to work together to house our lower-income residents and special-needs populations. We appreciate the support of the council and Mayor Reed, and look forward to continuing to dialogue with you on how we can end people's homelessness, including our veterans who did make it home only to find themselves homeless. May we work very hard to house them as soon as possible. Thank you.
Yes, mayor, members of the council. The city council met in closed session this morning. There are two items to report out. Both are public employee appointments pursuant to Government Section 54957. The title's Director of Information Technology. The council appointed VJ Semeta and Director of Parks, Recreation, and Neighborhood Services. The council, it's actually a ratification of the appointment by the city manager, Julie Edmonds-Morris, in both cases. The vote was nine to two with councilmembers Calra and Rocha voting no.
Thank you. Our next item is the consent calendar. The items councilors would like to pull for discussion. I have no requests. Council, oh, looks like I do. Council McCamus.
Yeah, I like item 2.10 and... The one that got redone, it used to be 7.3, and now it's 2.18. The one that got redone, it used to be 7.3, and now it's 2.18.
2.18.
Yeah, thank you.
Wait a minute, let me just make sure. 2.10 is the Administrative Citation Schedule of Fines.
Yes, I just had a quick question on that.
And 2.18 is the Agreement with ADS Environmental Services. Correct?
Yes.
All right. Others, Councilman Campos.
Thank you, Mayor. 2.7.
Councilman Liccardo.
I'd like to speak on 2.1 generally.
You have a motion to approve the balance of the consent calendar. On that motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed. 2.1, Councilman Liccardo.
I just wanted to thank our city clerk, Toni, and her team, Susan, and everyone for... I understand there's been just a monstrous effort to try to get back up to our current date with regard to all the minutes, and I understand there was a backlog that was in excess of many, many months when you came into office. So thank you for the hard work of you and your team in getting us back up to where we are now. I think that will make things much more efficient, particularly as we pull things off the rules' calendar.
Councilman Herrera.
Thank you for bringing this up, Councilwoman Liccardo. Yeah, you've done an incredible job, and there was a lot of things to go through in boxes and boxes that you had to sift through, and you're just doing a fantastic job of getting us caught up. Thank you.
Is there a motion on that item? We have a motion to approve item 2.1 on that motion. All in favor? Opposed? None opposed? That's approved. 2.7, Councilman Campos, that is Amendment to Myers-Nowery Agreement for Legal Services.
Thank you, Mayor. I pulled it because I wanted to register a no vote. I think that, you know, since we've gotten started with the litigation, you know, we just keep putting more resources into this fund that, you know, could go back into supporting essential services in our neighborhoods. So I'm going to register a no vote.
I would like to note that we're counting on $20 million out of that litigation for this next fiscal year budget, and there's another $48 million in future years. So there's a lot of money at risk in the litigation, and we are unable to use in-house lawyers very much because most of them have a conflict of interest. So we are using outside counsel. But there's a huge amount of money at stake for the taxpayers and for the residents who depend on the services. So I'm going to support the amendment. We have a motion to approve. Councilman Herrera.
In addition to that, this is all going back to supporting what the voters clearly said they wanted was for us to bring back services in the passage of Measure B.
Councilman Cora.
Yeah, I don't think anyone's surprised what my vote's going to be on this. I will not be supporting the motion on the table, and clearly, the voters or the residents want services. What the voters voted for or not in terms of pension modifications is a separate issue. There's no doubt that folks want services, and to assume this is the only way we can get there is just not true. I will, however, refer briefly to the chaplain earlier that said, you know, we can just agree and we can debate, but at the end of the day, we are all on the same team. We just may not agree on how to get those services to the community. I do have a question. It says that it's being funded by an increase in the estimate for revenue from the state of California and the amount of $1 million. So I don't know if there's anyone here that can answer specifically to that. Yeah, it's tobacco tax money. Okay. And so that was another... Not tobacco tax, tobacco settlement money. Tobacco settlement money, yes. And so it was a larger amount than we had anticipated, and certainly, I'd like to see those funds used particularly for public services or for services to the residents as opposed to litigation to an outside law firm. Yes, there is number... There are numbers you can attach to litigation as to what the city will get if we're successful in some of the current, many, many lawsuits that are right now in the court system due to Measure B. However, to presume that that's the only way we could have gotten those resources to provide services to our residents is just false. And ultimately, I think that Measure B, and frankly, I still believe it's an uphill battle for us to win the litigation. Even if we were to win litigation some year down the line, the damage that's being done to the city is certainly not worth it as opposed to collaboratively working with our employees in order to achieve short-term and long-term savings. I still think that we're going to lose a bulk of the most significant long-term issues of Measure B, which is to go after the vested rights in the contract provisions. And if that does happen, not only are we back to square one, we're actually behind where we would have been if we had just, from day one, worked with our employees to get a real pension reform done.
Councilman Liccardo.
Yeah, I'd just point that during negotiations in this effort, I know the city revised its offer at least a half dozen occasions to try to offer a more conciliatory approach that would get us to a place where everyone could agree we could save funds that were being committed to retirement services that we, at a time in a crisis frankly in the city, when we were spending close to $250 million in retirement services and benefits, I should say, and we were eliminating hundreds of jobs as we were doing that. I look forward to hearing from Councilmember Cora how we can get the $20 million of savings this year and the $48 million of ongoing savings. We've only been at this for three or four years with retirement benefits reform, and I have not yet heard a viable alternative.
Because we went down all route that wouldn't allow for us to get there.
Let me get one at a time. Councilman Liccardo.
Thank you. I've not yet heard a viable alternative offered by Councilmember Cora or anyone that Councilmember Cora associates himself with on this issue. And so I very much look forward to that proposal now, some three or four years later.
Councilman Constant.
I'd just like to remind people of the history that got us here. The very first step we took in the pension reform was putting together a collaborative group, a task force, to look at the pension reform, and a number of the stakeholders sat and contributed absolutely nothing over a course of a large number of meetings to start the collaboration, and that continued through months and months of negotiations that we had people not wanting to collaborate, canceling their meetings, not showing up, not negotiating. And when you look at not only the immediate savings that we're seeing this year and the future savings, but quite frankly, the cost of doing nothing or the cost of stopping the defense of this is immense. And we are doing... We are in the middle of what has been a long-term process. We've made a commitment to the voters. The voters have made a commitment to us, and we need to see this through.
We have a... Okay, we have a motion to approve item 2.7 on the motion. All in favor? Opposed? One, two, three, I count three opposed. Cora, Campos, and Chu opposed. Motion carries on at eight three. Vote taking us to item 2.10. Councilman Camus, those are amendments to Administrative Citation Schedule of Fines.
Yeah, I wanted to be clear, because the last time when we were discussing going forward, we said that we were going to let the people who are currently in the process of a permit, they're going to be allowed to have their boxes. And I know that they haven't been approved yet, and I want to make sure that they don't get fined even though that they're in the process of getting approved. That's... I just wanted to clarify that.
That's correct. Laurel Prevetti, Assistant Director for Planning, Building, and Code Enforcement. The item before you with 2.10 is really legislation to make sure that our citation fines are set at the right place, and it does deal with donation boxes as well as outdoor vending. On June 4th, the city council will reconsider, will have, will continue its discussion on the unattended donation boxes. So at this point, we do not, we don't have any short-term cases that are before us where we intend to use the fines later on this afternoon or immediately. What we want to make sure is that once the legislation is in place for the donation boxes, we've got the enforcement tools to go with it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your motion on item 2.10.
Motion to approve? Second?
Motion is to approve item 2.10. On that motion, all in favor? Opposed? None opposed? That is approved. Our next item is 2.18. That's Agreement with ADS Environmental Services. Councilman Camus, I think you wanted to speak on that one.
Yeah, I just wanted to have some clarity. I know we're spending $4.5 million, and from what I read, it's a study on what comes out of our sewage systems, and I don't know if the money would be better spent actually fixing some of the sewage systems. I don't know. I mean, that's what first struck my mind, and I don't... Just wanted to hear why we have to spend so much money on a study.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, David Sykes, Director of Public Works. Good question. I certainly recognize the investment that we're proposing to make here. The information that we'll get from this flow monitoring will drive a significant part of our decision-making in terms of how we plan and manage the system. In terms of a little bit of background, there's two important things we need to know about the system. The condition of the pipes and their capacity. In terms of the condition of the pipes, the council's seen contracts where we TV the pipes and grade them and determine their condition and make recommendations for, you know, addressing the deficiencies in a pipe. The flow monitoring helps us determine the carrying capacity of the pipe, which is critical. By that, we can make the proper decisions about where to invest to increase capacity, for example, to support the general plan, where we can divert flows to manage the system more efficiently. So I would say virtually every city in the country that has a collection system like ours takes, makes use of flow monitoring to be able to drive their decision-making. So that's a bit of a background, but I'd be happy to continue with any other questions that you have.
Yeah, it just seemed excessive. I mean, I, you know, when you put the pipes in, they usually rated something. I mean, we don't have any knowledge of what these pipes are rated.
Sure, interesting. You know, you do a theoretical calculation when you design the pipe, but over time, conditions change. The slope of the pipe changes over time, and so there's a lot of things that go into that. And knowing the theoretical capacity is one element of it, but also understanding how much that pipe is actually carrying during dry weather conditions, during wet weather conditions, helps you fully understand the capacity in the system, helps you determine whether you need to add more capacity or whether you have a capacity in the system. So you look at this contract, yes, it's $4 million, but I think of all the money we save in terms of looking at infrastructure that we don't have to build because we're properly managing the system we have and the capacity we have.
Thank you.
Do you have a motion on that one? Motion is to approve item 2.18. On that motion, all in favor? Opposed? None opposed? Motion carries. Including the consent calendar, we'll move to item 3.1, Report of the City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One item today. Yesterday, the county assessor's office released residential housing market information that shows that residential values are up across the county, including San Jose. The assessor survey for 25 neighborhood areas across the county shows that single-family home values are up, ranging from 4% to 24%, and condominiums are up 13% to 46%. This information is being used by the assessor's office in its annual assessment of residential property. That's scheduled for release at the end of June. With this increase in home values, the number of properties that have been, that have received a temporary reduction in their property tax under Proposition 8 will go down by about one-third. Along with the restoration of the housing market, our property tax revenues will increase as a result of the reassessments following the recovery of local home values. While the property tax assessments for 2013-14 have not yet been finalized, we will bring forward a manager's budget addendum based on the latest information from the county with a recommendation to the council for how to allocate the money. As we always do, we will continue to monitor and evaluate changes to our projections for both revenues and expenses and adjust as appropriate, and we'll also continue to keep you informed as more information comes to our attention. And that concludes my report.
Our next item is 3.3, Actions Related to Team San Jose Performance Measures.
No report. We're just here to answer questions.
Councilman Constant. We have a motion to approve.
I don't know if we got the motion. I was going to make a motion, but I just want to make a comment. And, you know, it wasn't that long ago we were sitting here deciding on moving forward with the expansion at the convention center, and we had quite a bit of talks about what we were going to do during the time the center was under construction and how it would affect the attendance and the events at the convention center. And we were trying to figure out what we were going to do when we weren't going to be able to book the activity that we wanted to at the convention center. Fortunately, as we all know, the convention center's been doing very well throughout the expansion process. In the midst of construction, they're not only holding steady, but they're increasing revenues, and we've seen considerable increases. What this item is doing today is letting us officially recognize those revenues and their associated expenses to make sure we have it all correct in our budget. But I think we really have to take the time to thank the staff at Team San Jose, particularly those folks in sales who get the jobs in, and the people in operations who make sure that they're able to operate, have those events, and operate the convention center in the midst of all that heavy equipment and disruption of the construction. It's... I know everyone gets to drive by every once in a while. It's looking great. We're on track to open on time, and I think this is very good news. It's much better than I think any of us could have hoped for when we were talking about the expansion. So Bill and Dave and the team up there, thank you very much, and the motion's already been made. I just urge everyone to vote for it.
Councilman Rocha.
Thank you, Mayor. Inquired with staff about the status of the infomemo based upon the discussion in the last council action we had on the incentive package and additional dollars that were in question. The status of that infomemo, I believe, was going to be released. Did I miss it? Was it?
It actually was out this morning.
This morning?
Yeah.
And the timing in terms of releasing it today, was there any kind of connection here, or was it only because I raised the issue, or was it just about finished and...
No, actually, I asked Lee to get it out by today, given the discussion last time, and just that this item was on today, so I thought it might come up.
Thank you. I was in closed session from nine until noon and then a lunch with my staff members. Can you share with me a little bit of the infomemo and the update from that?
Absolutely, council member. Working with Team San Jose, they submitted reimbursements of a total of $365,000. The council direction was to work with Team San Jose to look at whether those costs were deemed appropriate city expenses, and then work with Team San Jose to see what they could absorb. After that work, the city manager recommended spending $290,000 out of that appropriation to reimburse Team San Jose.
And in this infomemo, if you can, I have in front of me, is this itemized, what those expenditures were?
It is not itemized. We do talk about the three requests that we received from Team San Jose that we deemed appropriate city expenses, and they were wages for senior staff, key managers, sales and operations, and then a contract with CMA as part of the renovation and expansion project.
So there's no capital in this? This is all compensation for employees and a consulting contract that we're covering?
That is correct.
Councilman Herrera.
I just wanted to acknowledge the great work of Team San Jose and that these numbers are great, and echo what my council colleague, Pete Constant, said. I think it's tremendous. We also appreciate their informative reports coming to our Economic Development Committee, and just keep up the good work. Looking forward to opening the convention center.
I'd like to add my congratulations to Team San Jose, and thanks to the team of Team San Jose and all the staff that have shown lots of improvement, not just in the last year, but over the last five or six or seven years since we went through a bad patch, to say the least. Things have gotten much better, and the fact that we're doing better even during the construction phase is much better than we had anticipated because we knew that the construction would be disruptive. So we're handling it very well, and it's... It takes a lot of effort to do that. So that's good news, and we're happy to see that the economy is improving and hotel revenues are going up, and that makes it, I think, unnecessary to use some of the funds that we thought we might have to call upon. So this is a bit of good news. Congratulations to Team San Jose.
We have a motion to approve on that motion. All in favor? Opposed? None opposed? That is approved. Item 3.4 is our next item. That's Actions Related to the Marijuana Business Tax.
This is the, under the Brown Act... This is, this is the, under the Brown Act, the voters have already approved the ability to raise this tax as high as 10%. Under the Brown Act, before council can increase it from seven to 10, we need two meetings. This is the first meeting.
So do we need to direct the staff to prepare an ordinance, or do we wait until after the second?
I think we would like the direction to come back, and we'll, we'll go from there.
Okay, so we would have a motion, Counselor Liccardo.
I move to return to council for the second meeting.
With an ordinance?
With an ordinance, yes.
Okay.
Yes. And I also have a question. Rick, what's the status of, of council's referral on modifying the ordinance to be able to go after the, the folks who are skirting the taxes?
It's coming out June 4th.
Okay. So the ordinance is coming to us?
Next meeting.
Fabulous. Looking forward to it. Thanks.
Right, we have a motion to direct staff to bring back an ordinance probably for June 4th so that we can consider the change. I have no request from the public to speak on this item. Anybody who didn't put in a card that wants to speak? I see nobody, so we have a motion to direct staff to come back on that motion. All in favor? Opposed? None opposed? That is approved. Item 3.5 comes up next.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counselor Constant.
Excuse me, I need to recuse myself on this item. I've turned in my conflict form.
Okay, this 3.5 is regarding workers' compensation and agreement with Athens administrators for services.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Members of the City Council. Alex Skurza, Deputy City Manager, with me today. To my right, Dave Wong, Division Manager in Human Resources, and to my left, Carrie Rank, our Administrative Officer. We're pleased to bring this item before you today as part of the city's comprehensive workers' compensation reform efforts. We did have an opportunity to preview this with the Public Safety, Finance, and Strategic Support Committee, who we have been briefing monthly on our efforts. We have had an extensive RFP selection process, and at, when we started this process, we didn't know whether or not we'd be out, we'd be recommending outsourcing any part of our claims. We did know, however, that we needed to continue to have a, a outside vendor that provided many other types of services in workers' compensation, what are referred to as cost containment. We issued an RFP, went through an evaluation process, and came to you in October to recommend a two-year pilot program that would outsource a portion of our workers' compensation claims, having the remaining portion done by in-house staff. As a result of that process, the recommendation of the award went to Athens administrators who had the overall highest ratings. We have negotiated an agreement with Athens, subject to your approval this afternoon. The key points of the agreement with Athens is they, they will be doing all of the cost containment, when I say all, for all claims in this city, not only those that they, that they are administering. And those cost containment services are referred to as bill review, utilization review, and medical case management. Another key component to our workers' compensation reform was to explore the use of a medical provider network, which is a network of physicians that our injured workers would go to. Athens does have resources to utilize one of their medical provider networks, and the contract provides that at the city's option, we can utilize their medical provider network. That, that makes it easier in terms of, and avoids us having to separately go out and get our own medical provider network. Athens is going to allocate a dedicated team to San Jose that will work on, on the claims here, and they will be subject to performance objectives. We have separated the claims that Athens will handle by department, and so they, they will be handling the, the claims for the departments you see here. The largest department they will be handling is the Fire Department, PRNS, Public Works, ESD, Airport, and Human Resources. They will handle not only new claims in those departments, but the current inventory of claims. The balance in all of the other departments will be handled by our internal team. The contract will be for a two-year period. A little bit about Athens administrators. They have been voted one of the top 100 places to work in the Bay Area. They have extensive city and specifically sworn personnel experience, which is important since they will be handling the Fire Department claims. But they don't only handle public sector, they have major accounts, including public entities and the private sector. And so they also are leaders in technology and operate in a paperless environment, which also contributes to efficiencies and reducing claim costs. One of the things that was very important to us and is important to Athens is customer service. Clearly, saving money is a very important element, but also how we treat our injured workers and the customer service. This is just an example of a postcard that Athens uses and when they mail to a claimant, when they first file a claim, and give contact information, and that's clearly something we look forward to, and we'll be looking to make sure that, that Athens provides excellent customer service, and they are dedicated to doing so. Little bit about the staffing. So we're going to have two teams. We're going to have an, an internal team and a team provided by Athens. So as part of this, we're, we're reducing our city team by eliminating eight positions. One of our goals was to avoid any layoffs, and we have met that goal, because as vacancies occurred during this process, we have not filled them in order to avoid layoffs. So, so no city employee will be laid off as part of this pilot program. And we also have the remaining city staff that will handle the other departments, Dave Wong, the Division Manager, along with a senior workers' adjuster, four adjusters, and other staff that are going to be part of the program. I really want to take this opportunity to thank our internal team that has worked diligently through this process and are going to continue to service of the other claims. I also want to take a moment to thank the, our temporary staff that have been critical to handling this function. As vacancies have occurred, although we didn't fill them, we needed to continue servicing the claims, and we've, we've had a great success with having very dedicated temporary staff that have helped us through this, and I really want to thank both the internal team and our temporary staff through, through this process. A little bit about the next steps. After you approve the contract, we're going to have outreach meetings with city departments and the bargaining units that represent employees in the pilot program. There's going to be a lot of thought and planning going in, which has already started, on a transition, which includes notification of the affected employees that have claims, to make sure they know how, how their claims are going to be handled. We're working, we're going to be working on the transition of data and files to Athens. And, and very importantly, we're going to be continuing to evaluate, evaluate the program as it goes. When we came to council previously, you asked us to come back after one year of the pilot, rather than waiting for two years, and we're going to come back in a year and discuss how the, how the pilot is going. So with that, happy to answer any, any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we've lost electronics. Anybody else have a problem, or okay? All right, I think we're back, we're back up. I just wanted to make note of the fact that this is a really important program, it costs us a lot of money, and there are opportunities there for better service for our employees and, and cost savings, and that's why this has gotten high on the priority list and why we're making this effort to control the costs and provide better services. We're spending about $20 million a year, roughly, and if we were operating at the same level as many of our cities similar, or Santa Clara County, we could probably save half of that. So we're talking a potentially $10 million savings that we can hope that we can get some of that. So this is a very important pilot, a very important program, and I'm looking forward to seeing the, the result, results come back to us after we've done the, the one year. Counselor Camus.
I want to thank you for, for going forward of this recommendation. I actually come from the industry. Workers' comp is an expertise of mine. I do have a lot of technical questions, but I want to first, you know, thank you very much for going down this path. I mean, it's, it's fantastic to hire experts to do workers' comp, because not a lot of people understand where we could save money, and almost all corporations of our size or even smaller already do this kind of thing. I want to ask you about the performance objectives that you're, that you're putting in the, into the evaluation of the contract. So is there, is there like a monetary objective, how much in savings that we're expected to have from this contract?
Thank you, Counselor Camus. We don't have a specific monetary objective, but there is no question that part of the performance objectives is to demonstrate savings, actual savings. I, I think one of the reasons we did this as a pilot is because we strongly believe there is savings potential there, but until we try it, it's hard to put an exact dollar amount. But part of the objectives, again, to give you some examples, is lowering the city's overall workers' compensation costs, decreasing the city employee's amount of time spent off of work, demonstrable cost containment and claim closure performance. We're going to be measuring this, we're not just going to wait a year to measure that performance, we're going to be monitoring this monthly and even more frequently about how it's going. We're going to establish key performance measures, not only for Athens, but for our internal team, to be able to see how it's going. So those are part of them, part of the performance measures, and as we get further into it, I think we'll be in a better position to set an actual cost savings target.
Great, thank you. So, so we actually have current, currently how we're, we're performing, and then we're expecting them just to do better than us?
Yes, we definitely have, have performance measures, we track many things, but one of the things that we're going to make sure we're doing is we're utilizing the same performance metrics for both Athens and internal teams, so you can compare apples to apples, rather than different performance measures for each team.
I'd like to see what our performance levels are sometime, not, not right now, but I'd love to see that. My second question is the medical provider network. A lot of corporations that I've advised actually insist that their employees go to a medical provider network. Is that something that we had to meet and confer on, or is that something that is, is something that we can insist on as well?
Well, we're clearly going to be talking to our bargaining units about this program and the advantages of a medical provider network there, and so there is an opt-out feature that an individual could pre-designate a physician to handle their claims. But we really think by educating our workforce, the advantages of a medical provider network, we're confident that it can be successful.
So it's a work in progress. I also have kind of an interest in this as well. A lot of, a lot of companies like Athens actually come up with analysis of how jobs can be done more safely and, and prevent workers' comp claims, but, you know, prevent injuries, and, and will actually analyze potential hazards in the workplace. And is that something else that we will be getting from Athens?
We'll, we'll definitely be looking forward to the different analytics, analytics that Athens provides, and you raise a very good point, which is taking an injury and looking at, at the cause of that injury to try to prevent similar injuries from occurring in the future. So we clearly think the type of data that we'll get will help inform some of those issues that you're raising.
Yeah, and, and like I said, all the workers' comp advisory companies that I've dealt with have, have a division or have a standard of, of seeing what types of claims are being made, then going, you know, doing it backwards, and how can we prevent it? And then, and laying out, and laying out procedures for each department, and hey, you know, here's how you handle picking up a hose or whatever, you know, whatever happens to be. So I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing improved procedures. I'd love to see what, what comes out of there, you know, what, what comes out, out of these evaluations.
Yes, absolutely. Obviously, the, the best claim is one that is never made.
That's right.
If we can prevent the injury from occurring.
Absolutely. Would love to have a, a very healthy workforce and without injuries, and I want to commend you on, on looking at this. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no request from the public to speak on this item. Is there a motion? You have a motion to approve the staff recommendation. On the motion, all in favor? Opposed? None opposed? Our next item is 4.1. We earlier approved a motion for reconsideration relating to a previous item regarding the sign code and the final adoption of an ordinance. We need to reconsider that, so council has approved that. We'll now reconsider it after having gotten it on the agenda. Counselor Constant, I think, had a couple of comments on this.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to explain why we're doing this. When I made my motion after showing some pictures and explaining why this was important, I wasn't as specific as I should have been. And we, in my motion, I, I specified the total size, but I forgot to include the ratio, and that was important to have in there. So fortunately, it was caught by our planning staff. They've provided, excuse me, the new language to correct that technical error, so I'd like to make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Now, this is the new first reading, then, of this ordinance, is it correct?
No, this will be the final.
This is the final.
This is the final. The motion to reconsider is to adopt the ordinance in its final form, and I take it from the order of the day, that included not just the need to hear today, but the motion to reconsider the item.
Correct.
Was a two-thirds vote minimum.
We have a, a motion to approve, then, on that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed? That's approved. Item 5.1, Grant Application to the Federal Highway Administration Grant for Beet Trail Reaches Project. The motion to approve. On the motion, all in favor? Opposed? None opposed? That's approved. Our next item would be the study session, which we have noticed not to start before 3:00, so the staff has a chance to get here. Are there any requests to speak under open forum? We have no open forum requests at this time, so we're going to take a recess until 3:00 PM. Is that okay, City Clerk? I missed something.
5.2.
Sorry. I got behind or ahead of myself, one or the other.
Yeah, we also have 6.1.
5.2, Parkland Agreement at the Flea Market, Bum and Associates item. Counselor Chu.
Sorry. Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to thank the PRNS staff, as well as the planning staff in, in effort in reviewing this parkland agreement for this project. And this parkline, parkland agreement will allow for a park and a trail improvement along the Coyote Creek, Penitentiary Creek and Coyote Creek, right, both of which respond to the community desire aligned with the project and general plan of 2040 goal. So I'd like to ask my colleague to support this motion of approving the staff recommendation.
All right, we have a motion to approve the staff recommendation. On the motion, all in favor? Opposed? None opposed? That's approved. 6.1, Actions Related to Bicycle and Pedestrian Projects Grant. We have a motion to approve. On the motion, all in favor? Opposed? None opposed? That's approved. Okay, now I think we're done until 3:00. Is that correct? No, still no cards to speak under open forum. Right, we're going to take a brief recess, we'll start again at 3:00. We were in the middle of the public safety study session, we'll take up with the fire, we're almost done with fire, and then we'll move into the police department portion of it. We'll start at 3:00. We'll start at 3:00. Good afternoon. I'd like to get our study sessions started. This is a continuation of a study session during the budget process on public safety items. We were, I think, about 90% done with the fire portion of the agenda and about to launch into police, which we'll do here in a few minutes. When we last convened, Councilor Campos had the floor, and he has a question or two left. We'll take that at this point.
Thank you, Mayor. And if you answered this, because I can't remember if I asked this question, please tell me that, that you already answered this. And it has to do with the hillside, the East Foothills. You're knowing that, and so, you know, the, the East Foothills, most of it's unincorporated, but we cover it. So what kind of plan do we have set? And, and given, given the numbers of, of personnel on each truck and how our fire stations along the, the hillsides, I believe there's four of them from Berryessa going to Evergreen, how would we attack something so that we don't have a case such as the, the Oakland Hills fire? And what really gets me worried, you know, as I said, I took a drive out behind the golf course, that area, and those are very narrow roads, and, and there's, you know, there's a lot of shrubbery around vegetation that looks like, you know, it would go up like a torch.
Good afternoon, Mayor Reed, members of the council. I'm Ruben Torres, Deputy Fire Chief. Councilmember Campos. To answer your question, we have the same concern with, with these foothills. And what we would do to attack a fire that would be in that area is we'd call for mutual aid pretty quick. We know that with the resources that Cal Fire has as far as helicopters is something that we're going to have to get going pretty, pretty quickly. On our own, we do have a plan. Cal Fire projects that there will be, this will be a busy season. Fuel conditions support this assumption. And so far, we've had plenty of small fires that are telling us that if there is a fire in the East Foothills, it's probably going to grow pretty quick, and we're going to have to get a hold of it fast. The main issue, I think, when it comes to fires up in the East Foothills is really public education. And we partner with the community. We have the Safe Council, Fire Safe Council that we work with. We also have a wildland officer that's dedicated to providing information to the residents of the East Foothills. And what we tell them is that they need to partner with us in making sure that they clear the vegetation around their homes, that they're prepared for the possibility, to make sure that they're careful when they're cutting their lawns or trimming bushes in those areas, and really that they call us quickly, because the sooner that we get out there, the sooner that we'll be able to try to control whatever the, the fire is.
I don't know if you have the slides that were used in the last presentation. There was a slide that I don't have a number on, but it was towards the end called squads. Where should squads be assigned? With circles and concentric circles on there showing where 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 squads are, and then some other circles. So I'm interested in where you are in assessing the, the value of the squads and what we are doing looking forward, and is there anything we need to do in this budget cycle around the squads as we move forward?
Well, in reference to the slide that you're speaking of, that was a slide that demonstrated the use of other technology like Google Maps. So we use Google Maps as one of the different methods for our mapping and making decisions on where things would go. So as far as the squads go, it is a one-year pilot program. Currently, our experience is that the squads are achieving their primary goals of actually keeping fire engines and fire trucks in service. Do we need to do something that, for the budget, for the future of the squads? At this point, our assessment isn't that we're going to need any other equipment. We'll probably be extending that pilot program, but that's a labor management initiative that we've partnered with, so we've had, we're going to have discussions with our labor partners on that pilot program.
A couple other things, just comments. In the presentation, we had some items that compared us to other cities, both on staffing and operating costs per capita. We are very low on operating costs per capita and low on staffing per capita, which probably explains why we're low on operating costs. But what occurred to me as I was looking at that is we're also low compared to those cities on revenues per capita, and that those revenues amount from hundred, couple of hundred dollars per capita to more than $1,000 per capita. Since we have a million people, those are really big dollars, really big differences between other cities. And so I just wanted to thank our department for working lean. You're a lot leaner than you want to be, but you've done a good job with limited resources during, during tough times. If we had as much money as some of our surrounding cities, well, we'd be rich, but we're not. So we have to do with limited budgets, and these are tough times. And then the, on that per capita information, the firefighter per capita slide, which was near the end of the presentation, next to the last slide. I can't read the numbers down in the blue, which is where San Jose and San Diego are. So if I could get that slide back up, I'd like to be able to just write those down. Or if you can tell me what they are, that would be okay, too.
Is it at the back?
If somebody has a, a slide deck on hard copy. So it's clear we're at the bottom of the list on a firefighter per capita, but San Diego's down there with us.
I, I believe, Mayor, that that was one of the slides that chief said that wasn't a slide that we had prepared for the presentation, but we'll try to get those numbers for you.
Okay.
The last couple of slides were ones that we were going to add. I think it's that one.
Yes, that one. I can't read the, the numbers in blue, but I know San Jose's down there.
We'll provide that information for you.
Okay. And I'm not the only one with excuse to blame it on my eyes, I guess.
On, a comment just on the, the leanness of the department, and thank you for recognizing that it is a lean department, and we operate with some of the lowest staffing per capita. One of the analyses that I did by looking at the LAFCO report was that if you took all of the cities in Santa Clara County and added them all up, the population that they serve and protect is roughly 7,800, 783,901, and San Jose protects a million. When you look at the stations that the whole county would be, it'd be 57 stations, and with San Jose, we have 33. With the sworn personnel, it's 780 personnel, and for us, it's 650. And for the daily staffing, it's 217, and 168 is what we have. So when we look at that, the difference really is the population that we cover, and this is from 2009, is 253,000 more people. We have a difference of 24 less stations, and we have 130 sworn personnel less, and daily staffing of 49 less. So for the department, we actually do cover a lot of ground compared to a virtual Santa Clara County with all the cities involved.
Councilor Liccardo.
Thank you, Mayor. Recognizing that the numbers are very compelling about how very severely understaffed our department is, as, as we, as I understand it, in terms of the preventative measures the fire department undertakes, and I know there's a lot of inspections, a lot, a lot that happens in the department, we often hear anecdotally that checking homes for fire alarms, making sure the alarms work, is one of the most cost-effective things we can possibly do. And I can imagine of all the things about which a firefighter or fire administrator needs to be knowledgeable, that is probably the least sophisticated of all the things you need to know something about, right? I mean, I'd like to believe most of us could hopefully figure out the fire alarm piece. And so the question I have is, I understand a lot of firefighters on their, on their spare time are doing this, sort of the, the knock and talks, and I'm grateful for their willingness to volunteer for those efforts, and they do it in partnership sometimes with some folks in the private sector. And I'm wondering if there are any opportunities to routinize that process, either with retirees or a core of volunteers, not existing firefighters, but people who would be out there. And so many volunteers are interested in trying to support public safety in our community. And I guess the question is, is how extensive would the training need to be if we were to have a team of volunteers out there knocking on doors, particularly in communities where we know, I mean, for instance, the data shows 95112, which happens to be the ZIP code that I live in, is off the charts in terms of fires, well ahead of any other ZIP code. Focusing even just on those neighborhoods where we know the highest risk is, how hard would it be for us to be able to train a team of 20, 30 volunteers to be out there doing this in some routine fashion?
Councilmember Liccardo, thank you for that question. I, I too live in the 95112 ZIP code, and so I clearly understand the concern, especially in that neighborhood where it seems like just around my house, we've had several fires.
Yeah, I think across from the street from your house.
Right across the street from my house. And recently, we had a fatality of, of a young child just around the corner.
Yeah.
So I recognize the, the seriousness of wanting to get out and knock on doors and making sure that people have smoke detectors and appropriate information on how to keep their home safe. Volunteers are always a great resource to, to have for public education, but it's nothing like having the fire department out there really emphasizing it. So our crews often go out, and especially after a fire, they'll go out into the neighborhoods, and people will come out and ask questions. How did the fire start? And they'll actually go out and explain to the community that, you know, here's, here's the cause. A recent news release by the NFPA says that cooking equipment remains the leading cause of home and structure fires and home injuries. So it's the cookings that, there, sometimes we ignore that, but I think there's, there's room for us to expand our public education, not only to smoke detectors, but, you know, being safe when you're cooking. We used to go out and explain that to folks, but, you know, with, with the limited resources that we have, it's a little bit more challenging. The other one is the leading cause of, of fire fatalities is still smoking. And so making sure that folks know that, you know, if they're going to smoke, there's got to be a place for them to put their, discard their cigarettes. But those are still the, the national leading cause of fire fatalities.
Everything you've just said sounds to me to be absolutely right, and recognizing there really is no substitute for a firefighter who knows far more than any of us about fire risk. Is there, is there, would it be beneficial if we had a core of volunteers who are willing to do this? And I think we, we could pretty easily. I think we have a lot of civic-minded people in this community. How hard would it be to train them to the point where they would actually be useful in reducing the risk? To convey the very messages you just conveyed about cooking, about smoking, and then, of course, checking the fire alarms, make sure they got them?
Yeah, it is definitely something that we can all look into, Councilmember Liccardo. I do think that, again, the responsibility of keeping your community safe and keeping your family safe is something that every individual should, should have some information in their language, in their neighborhood, that helps them understand what the risks are. And I think that volunteers are always a good way of getting that information out. I know that we have contacted all the council members, chiefs of staff, to get the neighborhood association information, who to contact, and we want to partner with those neighborhood associations and get them the information, because they have a lot of contact in, in the community. So as far as difficulty goes, it's not difficult to, to train and get the information out. The challenge is that when it comes to installation and some of those legal things, that we probably would need the city attorney to weigh in on what they can or cannot do. So, but we will look into that and provide some information. So, but we will look into that and provide some information.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. And again, I recognize there's no replacement for a firefighter. We just know that there are jobs that you guys do that we don't want volunteers to do, and there are hopefully some jobs that we think volunteers may be a force multiplier for you.
Absolutely. And, and I think the one thing that, that's important for us is that our mission is really response and prevention. So prevention is a big part of our mission statement, so we go out and, and take that part of our mission statement very serious, and would continue to, to do that public education.
Councilmember Herrera.
Thank you, Mayor, and continuing on that theme, because I, we discussed it last week when the chief was here, I asked the very same question about volunteers and augmenting them. And it, it occurred to me, I know when I was out at the, at the grass fire over by Eastridge, there were some young people wearing uniforms that were related to the Fire Department, and I, those are, I'm, I'm wondering what the name of that program is? They were associated, they, they seemed to be in a volunteer capacity, and I, I don't know the name of the program.
I will defer that to our chief of operations.
Do you have sort of a junior program for young people that are interested in firefighting? They were wearing patches that looked like they were associated, maybe they weren't, but they were there at the fi, at the scene.
Councilwoman Herrera, thank you for the question. Gadsen's panelists are deputy chief of operations. I wasn't there myself, so I'm not completely familiar. There are several programs that we have an explorer program within the department. It could possibly be that they were there. Part of that program is they, they work as, ride, do ride-alongs to get more familiar with the job, and that may be the capacity they'd been, that they were there. And then there's also through the, the CCOC, they, they have a program, a fire academy program, too, for, and, and some of those folks work pretty closely with us as well. So, like I said, I wasn't there, so I don't know specifically which one, but.
But I think you mentioned, I think it's the explorers, probably. And do we have reserves? Do we have, do we have fire reserves like we have police reserves? Do we have anything like that?
No, we do not.
Okay. But, but we have some folks that have some sort of training, so I'm thinking some of these folks might be some of the volunteers we think of. And the other group I think about's the Red Cross. I don't know if we still have this, but we used to have Red Cross trained people that would be assigned to fire stations. And in, in the event of an emergency, they would be working with that fire station to deploy, to deploy whatever might be needed. Do we still have those folks that are working, that work with fire stations?
We don't currently have a, a program in place with the Red Cross that works closely with the fire station. We still work closely with the Red Cross, but primarily because they have the people that can come in after a fire and help with relocating the victims that, that have become homeless because of the fire. So that's, that's primarily where we work with the Red Cross.
Yeah, there was a specific program, and, and I don't know if anybody else up here remembers it, but maybe Pete, I don't know, that, that, these folks were specifically trained and assigned to fire stations. When I went through some training at the Red Cross, I know they still have the program in, in place, but there are people out there with training that would be probably some of the folks that could be involved in, in a volunteer effort. Certainly doesn't replace any firefighters, but if it can be augmented, I think, you know, if we can get the message out. The other, the other thought is, that I had is social networking, using our Nextdoor organization or others to just at least get reminders out to people that they ought to change the batteries and that sort of thing. That kind of reminder information can still, I think, be helpful.
Councilmember Herrera, that's an excellent recommendation. In fact, I think at one of the budget, community budget meetings, we met somebody from Nextdoor, and we've made that connection with them. So we've asked them to assist us in trying to get that information onto Nextdoor and having the Fire Department be part of Nextdoor.
Great.
You had a couple of slides called software utilized by department with about nine or 10 different kinds of, of software. We just had the report done by the city auditor on the fire inspection program with some data analysis and geographic data. And my guess is you have much more demand for data than you have the capacity to produce, because it seems to be endless of things that we can ask. And so my question for the budget is whether or not there's a, a spot that we ought to create, or spots we should create, or maybe just fill once again for civilian analysts to do data analysis in the department, because I know that we lost a lot of people, and a lot of that staffing was in the, sort of the capacity to manage data as well as, I mean, you guys are great at fighting fires, but there are people who fight data. And so in this budget, what is proposed for data analysis?
Mayor Reed, I'll defer that to Deputy Director Wanda Keoni, our administrative deputy director.
Thank you for the question, Mayor. Actually, within the budget, within the existing budget, what we, we've recognized the fact that we needed to ramp up the resources on the analytical side and the programming side. So what we have recently done is we, we changed administrative officer position, and we did an add delete, and we just hired, starting Tuesday, supervising applications analyst. And we took another analyst position, and we just closed the posting for another senior systems application programmer, both of whom are gonna be front and center on the plans going forward to evaluate the different systems we have and the data that they produce in a format that can be analyzed by the rest of the analysts.
Okay, so that sounds like enough for one budget cycle to handle some of the immediate needs.
It sounds like enough for now, until we get into this a little bit deeper and, and try to determine, do we have the right tools? And as the chief said last week, the tools that we have fully implemented, we need to go down that pathway. It's actually part of our strategic plan.
Good, and I think as, as we get into more data analytics, as we've seen in other cities, there's lots of data that most people don't ever get to look at. And we start wanting to look at that, it's gonna take another, it's gonna take more people to be able to do it in, in ways that we want, as we, as we grow our capacity to look at the data.
Absolutely, Mayor, and analytical staff.
Anybody else have a question on the fire part of the study session? That was all the requests I had pending. Anything that the department needs to add from the previous presentation or today?
Mayor Reed, members of the council, we just want to thank you for the opportunity to share in the information that we've been asked to provide, and on behalf of the men and women of the San Jose Fire Department, who are daily on duty, working for the citizens in the community, we did pass the message on that we're trying to, that we're being supported, and we continue to look forward to the support from the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the fire portion of the questions.
Mayor, I thought I had my light on, I'm sorry.
Sorry, you almost got out.
Yeah.
Councilmember Columbo has one more question.
Hey, I haven't asked a question yet. One of these colored maps here, it showed, it had green and yellow, I think it was either right before or right after this one, it showed one small area, and it had to do with, let's see, that one right there, the current response performance. Is that something you routinely run for different parts of the city? Or is it a special report you did for this?
I guess where I'm getting at is, is it possible for each of us to see something like this for each of our council districts?
Councilmember Constant, that particular slide there is, is a demonstration of the use of our CAD analyst software. And what that does is actually, it's a sequence of two slides, and it, it's more of a what-if scenario. It does actually use data, but it's, but we work with the software vendor, we ship them a year's worth of data, they load it into the software. And so what, what you're looking at is, is a year's worth of data, that's probably about a year old. But it's, it would allow us to, in, in this particular case, it was an analyst, an analysis of relocation of both stations 21 and 24, and, and the difference in the, in the response time performance with that scenario, with those changes in the scenario. So it's not really something that, that would give you the kind of information that probably is, is something that the public would understand.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Okay, we're done with the fire portion. We'll take a minute to swap out teams, and we'll move to the police portion of the study Okay, Chief Escaville, is there anything you want to add to the presentation where we cut you off last time? We'll just go into questions, up to you.
No, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I think we're pretty much set. I got all the deputy chiefs and Lisa Perez as well, so most of the subject matter experts for their departments, so I'm sure I refer to them quite often, but we're, we're set.
Okay, and we have the slides that we were using, in case you want to refer to the slide decks. Okay. Councilman Camus.
Thank you, Mayor. Can we bring my slide thing up? First, I wanted to thank, thank the police department for all their great work in our city. I know you're dramatically understaffed at this point, but I did have some que, I did have some questions. I, I want to make sure that, that our, our, our police officers, our rank and file, know, you know, what the, the good and the bad is for opening the substation. And I actually took the information that you were so generously brought to my attention a few weeks ago, and our staff looked into it. We looked into the previous numbers, we've looked in, you know, we, we actually did our own estimate, we did, and we used a lot of the resources that were given to us. If you can move to the second slide, I appreciate it. I wanted to show you what, what we came up with. We came up with two scenarios. One scenario that involved using the projections from the Phase 1 study, where actually with their projections, we used the average, the hour, average annual hour saved, which was projected about 10,080 hours. And, and we projected out the cost using the current cost for, for employees. And we, we actually didn't use the, the numbers that they suggested, which was a sergeant, based off a sergeant and, and top staff officer. We, we just used it off a top staff officer. And we were, we looked at that scenario, and it, and it looked like we'd, according to the time saved, they estimated 15 minutes for commute time to and from the, the beats from the, from the police, current police station to the Southern Division. And it was estimated at about four, 1.4 million dollars, according to our numbers. Plus, we looked at the mileage saved, and we used their numbers to predict the mileage that was saved, and, and their gas, gasoline cost projections were significantly, significantly lower than the current gasoline cost. So we, we, we used the current gasoline cost, about $3.80 per gallon, and came up with another $879,000 in annual savings by opening this substation. For a total of $2.28 million of annual savings, this does, this does not include the 184,000 that we currently spend on the police substation being closed. So I wanted to be, be absolutely clear, according to the, to the 2002 projections, we're saving money by opening the substation. Or, or you can look at it this way, we're spending $2 million to get 11 police officers on the job. We also, you, we also went a different route, because the projections that they used had higher number of police officers stationed in the Southern Division. But we decided to use the number of 270, because that's what was used in the current budget study, to, to, to position 270 officers instead of the 400 that was projected to, to go into that. We also used their number of 70% of the officers are on duty in any given day, and we used the same 15 minutes travel time savings, although I think it's more than 15 minutes during traffic hours or what have you, but we, we went, we went lowball on this stuff, so. We also used the same assessment as far as how many, how much it costs for, for employee hours. And we came up using the 270 police officers to 1.6 million dollars, more than 1.6 million dollars in savings, not including the estimated mileage on the cars. Again, we came up with 2.7 million dollars, according to, to my office's study. That being said, we're looking at either, you know, anywhere between 600,000 to 700,000 dollars net, net savings for the, for the city, and an additional 11 to 13 police full-time staff hours on the job. So I want to make sure that the officers know that we're not spending money recklessly. I know that, you know, city council, I, I mean, I personally hear that we're thinking about opening the substation, and, and that's gonna cause us to not hire police officers, and that's not the truth. We are actually getting a, a lot for our money by opening that substation, and that doesn't, that doesn't account for the cost, the, the, the untangible benefits of having the police officers travel less miles, especially those ones who live in, south of San Jose. You know, I've actually have a few, a few people that live in Hollister that, you know, have to travel a, a long way, and I think that'll help them out as well. So I think, I, I just wanted all of you to know that, that, you know, when I made my recommendation to open the, the Southern Division and agreed with the mayor, that we didn't do this on a, on a, in, in any reckless way. We were actually put a lot of thought into this, and this is not something that is gonna cost the city an exorbitant amount of money at the risk of, of, we, we're not here to sacrifice the current police staffing hours to open the substation. I want to be clear about that, and I want, and I want the officers to know that this was a deliberative decision, and, and I'm hoping that it, that does open, and I'm hoping that, 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 that the police enjoy the new building, because I, I, I've visited it, and it's a beautiful structure as well, and I think that enjoy working there as well. So I wanted to bring that to your attention, and, and just, just because I've gotten a few complaints via email saying, "Why are you spending our taxpayer money on a substation when we can hire more police officer?" And that's not the fact. We can actually get more police officers technically on the job this way as well. My second, I, I have a question. I, I, you know, I'm new at this, so please forgive me if I'm ignorant about something, and I, I, I wanted to ask you. I know that we change shifts every six months, and I know that, you know, it's, you know, at least in my neighborhood, you get used to having a, a police officer in your area, and you just make friends with them, and all of a sudden, they're gone, and we have to get used to someone else. And I don't know how that decision came about, and is, is that something that we're looking at, I mean, looking at extending, or, or is that something being discussed? I don't, I don't know how that decision is made, and I don't know if we can use to extend some of these positions so that, you know, and I, I agree that we shouldn't have them there forever, like being the, you know, the, having the, being there for years and years, but I, I think six months might be a little short when it comes to getting to know the community, and, and, and I think people get, get a certain amount of trust going with their beat officers, and then all of a sudden, they go to a, a different phase. So if you can explain that to me, I'd appreciate it. If somebody's asked you already, already about that, I apologize, but I just wanted to understand it a little bit.
Councilmember Camus, thank you very much, and councilmembers, and again, Mr. Mayor and city attorney and city manager, this is Laurie Escaville, acting chief. Thank you for the comment on, on the research you've done, and that's, obviously, this is the first time we've looked at those slides or documentation about the analysis that you did. And, and I truly believe in, and agree with you, too, at some point, it, it is gonna be a viable option, and, and really a cost-saving measure, and, and morale-wise, I mean, it's, it's gonna be a win for all of us, like we mentioned last week. But in, just to comment on that, and being realistic, and just what our staffing levels is with the, with the Phase 1 approach, I mean, just with the forecast attrition that we talked about last week, I mean, that's, that's some of the things that we have to take into, into consideration with that.
Absolutely. I mean, I, I wanna, I wanna do it on your, your time. I just don't want to be, I just don't want people to think that we're wasting our money on the substation, that's all.
Yeah, it was just a comment.
Yes.
But regarding the, the six months shift change, we've had that in place for quite a number of years, and it was agreement that was made, obviously. of years, and it was agreement that was made, obviously, that we thought was kind of the best practice way back when. It is, I believe, a meet-and-confer item that we'd have to address, and we've discussed it briefly, and at some point, I think we probably will discuss it again, because there are some benefits. Our shift change is based on seniority, and a lot of officers that actually do bid certain areas, I mean, they stay there for probably not only one shift, but two, three, four shifts in a few years at a time. So there is stability in that in terms of some of the officers that go out to certain areas, because not only like that community and the supervisors, a lot of it's based on seniority, where the supervisors will bid certain shifts or districts, and they bid with the sergeants as well, not only the area. So it has to do a lot with the officers, too, as to what kind of makes, you know, them want to go to those different areas in terms of every six months as opposed to every year. So, I mean, it's an issue that we've discussed before. I'm sure at some point, we'll, in the near future, probably discuss again, but it is something that we also probably will discuss with our P.O.A. to see what the stance on that is. But, and if there's anything else that I'm missing from our deputy chiefs on that.
Thank you again. Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Thank you, Mary Reid. Let me just start by really thanking Chief Larry Escaville and his entire team for the presentation. I learned a lot, and I've always had a lot of respect and appreciation for the department, but after listening to the entire presentation, I'm now more than grateful for the work that you do on a daily basis. So, thank you. I'm very excited about the re-implementations of the TAPs program. More than 10 years ago, I had an opportunity to work with some of these youth chronic truants from the various high schools in our city, and I just wanted to share how valuable and effective that program was. It's not just working with chronic truants, but I think that we also had the opportunity to work with some of the nonprofit organizations as well as the schools in our city, not only to deter these youth from possibly entering social environment that are less desirable, but at the same time, preventing them from entering a war of gangs and some of the other activities that we wouldn't like, that we don't want to see. So for a long time, I was wondering when, you know, we're going to bring that programs back, and now I'm just really excited that we're heading toward that direction. I just had some questions, and these questions actually came up during the last week, the District 7 Community Budget Meeting. Deputy Chief Fung Ho was there. Thank you very much for being there and answering questions, as well as Captain Brian Ferrante. He was also there, answering a lot of the concerns and questions from the community members. But a lot of the questions were raised about the possibility of installing cameras at highly visible sites where, you know, vandalism and graffiti were happening. I was wondering if, you know, any of the chiefs would talk to us about whether it's effective or maybe perhaps ineffective to install some of these cameras, because I understand that if you were going to install the cameras, we need someone there to monitor the cameras in order to make it more effective. So if you can just talk a little bit about that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. There's several communities that are trying to implement cameras in their neighborhoods, and they actually were running across a few issues with them. One is, quite frankly, who monitors the cameras? Obviously, there's a difference between if a government agency monitors the cameras compared to private citizens monitoring cameras. Right now, we're working with the City Attorney's Office, actually, to figure out exactly what those parameters can be, whether it's signage on public property and on public right-of-ways, or if it's cameras. So those are issues that we're working out currently with the City Attorney's Office.
And when do anticipate, you know, some analysis or some kind of outcome that comes out of, you know, the ongoing work with the City Attorney's Office?
That's, I don't know. I heard about it for the first time before this meeting, but it is an issue, and I would hope probably in the next 30 to 60 days, we'd have something.
And would that come to the Public Safety Committee, or is that coming to us?
It would go back to the department, and then how the department, how we'd want to bring it forward, whether Public Safety or come back to the council, we'd get the information out.
Okay. Well, I look forward to having a discussion about that and reading to see, you know, what's going to come out from all of this. The other question I had has to do with the prohibitions of smoking in public parks. Questions were raised about, you know, there's just a lot of individuals smoking marijuana in public parks, and when community members approached them, they would respond by saying, well, you know, I have a card, a medicinal marijuana card, and so this allowed me to smoke in public parks. But I understand that in 2009, you know, I actually drafted the memo and it became an ordinance where we prohibit smoking in public parks. What do you do in an instance when, you know, you get a phone call, or you happen to be there, for example, and someone smoked marijuana, and they said, I have a medicinal marijuana card? Are they, they're not allowed to smoke in these parks, are they?
No, I'm going to actually refer that to Deputy Chief Hober regarding medicinal marijuana and some of the marijuana issues.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. If it's illegal to smoke in a park, then you can't smoke anything in those parks. And so whether it's marijuana or any type of cigarette, it's still going to be illegal, as I understand that law.
And will these individuals be cited?
They could be cited, yes, if they're in a place that they're not supposed to be smoking.
Okay, that's good. And then just a final question on, again, graffiti abatement or enforcement. Several years ago, we had, the department had police officers that are solely designated to do work around graffiti enforcement. Now, under the proposed budget, we're looking to hire about 21 CSO. Chief Escaville, is there any possibility, and I know, you know, you're going to go through this, go through the motions, and figure out what these officers need to do, but is there any considerations for some of these officers to do work around graffiti abatement and graffiti enforcement? Obviously, it's such a big issue right now. It's pretty much, you know, the issue of the day for a long time. I was just wanting to see if the department has any ideas in terms of graffiti enforcement, you know, possibly leading to graffiti abatement in our city.
Yeah, matter of fact, we actually had a meeting with Mayor's Game Prevention Task Force with Mario Marcel regarding just some of the things that they do with San Jose Clean in terms of the software, how it's utilized, and we got a presentation, and how it's stored, something that at some point, I think in the very near future, we'll be able to have not only access, but to be trained how to access, say, certain monikers, and then actually drill it down to specific locations. And the last time it was actually put on a specific location, and really then help us with some enforcement in terms of attacking certain people that are actually doing a lot of the, almost like burglaries. You've got a group of people that are doing multiple burglaries, probably just a few group of taggers that are doing multiple tagging. So we're going to look at that, and I think in the very near future, again, as our staffing grows, and maybe towards the end of this calendar year, then we can actually maybe have some kind of component back in, a place where we can actually have some graffiti or a graffiti enforcement officer to then not only access it, but to coordinate with also our patrol officers and division personnel, and possibly community service officers to really do some enforcement work.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate knowing that this is something that you're going to be looking at, because, you know, we had an hour and a half of just Q and A, and then the mayor was just, you know, very gracious to stay there toward the end of the meeting, but, you know, 90% of the questions were just revolves around graffiti, graffiti abatement, and camera. So I just wanted to raise those questions, those concerns, so that we can respond to our constituents, because there were some questions that we weren't able to respond because we didn't really know the answers to some of the questions. So I appreciate your answers. Thank you.
And graffiti is kind of a part of the focus in gangs as well, so, I mean, that's kind of just a little part of that that we're going, that we are looking at. Yes.
Councilmember Cora.
Thank you, Mayor. And let me start where Councilman Camus was talking about the substation, because I think that we're in the same place in that we both like to see it open, but I also, as I've expressed, want to make sure it's done in a manner in which we're not taking any resources away from patrol. And so I appreciate the fact that we're on the same page up here, wanting to get the substation open, but wanting to make sure that it's done on your terms, Chief, and that it's done in a manner that is most effective. And so you mentioned a phased approach, and I imagine the phased approach will start by not necessarily being publicly accessible, but allowing it to be at least accessible for the sworn officers in order to, for efficiency purposes. Is that a part of the idea?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, and so I fully support that plan of starting with it not being publicly accessible and having the, using it for those same efficiency purposes that Councilman Camus talked about. But again, deferring to you and your command staff, once the analysis is done, to make sure it's worthwhile, so that we're not, as was stated, so we're not taking away at all from patrol or other resources or the capacity to respond into the neighborhoods. And I do think that upon analysis, we'll find an opportunity to take advantage of the substation for more quickly responding to issues in that part of town. And I know when the substation also was initially being contemplated, first of all, we're the biggest city to not have one, so we need one, but at that time, there was also contemplation of developing the Cuyahoga Valley, which has not happened, thankfully, in my estimation, but there still has been an increase in population, and there'll continue to be an increase. There's about to be 3,000 homes or so built down off Hitachi, right next to where the substation is going to be. So I think it'll be a great benefit to the community, again, allowing you, Chief, to determine the best use of that asset. And I have some questions regarding the presentation, starting, and anyone that'd like to answer, I'm not, it's hard for me to remember exactly who did what part of the presentation. I think Deputy Chief Mirosek had started about, talking about patrol staffing and the fact that we're a lot lower than we used to be, which is not a surprise to anyone. And Deputy Chief, you had mentioned that we're down two teams in traffic enforcement, so how many do we have in total, then?
Thank you, Councilman Cora. We have four teams left, so that's four sergeants and five officers a team, so we have 25. And then separate from that is our special events team, which is also assigned to traffic, but that's a sergeant and three officers. They just, they don't do any enforcement.
Yeah, that's what, so those are the ones that are hired when people have special events?
That's correct.
And do you know, or do you have the, do you recall how many traffic enforcement units we had in 2008?
Yeah, 2008, we had six teams along with the set team, and we had, it's, I don't know the exact number, Councilman, but it's, the total traffic enforcement unit was about 45 officers in 2008.
Okay, and what is it now, in total number?
We have in the high twenties.
Okay, thank you. And you discussed that the minimal number of patrol officers necessary, and again, partly because of our lower staffing, is 492 is a rock bottom minimum. Although you'd indicated that 548 is ideal, we're at where we're at, and so we have 492. That being said, the reality is that, given our staffing, we only have on regular duty enough officers to have 459 staff at a time. So from what I recall, the notes I took, those extra 33 positions to get to the 492 rock bottom minimum is being, those positions are being paid through 132 10-hour shifts each week of overtime to bridge the gap between the 459 and the 492. I want to make sure that I get that accurately.
Yeah, that's correct. A lot of times, we think of 33 shift, or 33 positions as being shifts, which is incorrect. That's 33 four 10-hour shifts that we schedule and staff each week.
How long has, how long have we been doing that?
Well, the number changes weekly, depending on resignations, injuries, retirements, but we have been doing that since, the 492 number since September of 2012.
So we're going now on seven, going on to eight months of using overtime in order to make sure that our city is minimally staffed?
That's correct.
How long can we, I mean, just speaking from your experience, or anyone else in the command staff, how realistic is it for us to keep that up? Because another number I recall, and I'm not sure exactly who's the one that detailed this, may have been the Assistant Chief, but that, if things are going the way they are in terms of, if we were to have full academies, and if attrition, you know, happens the way it happens, and we still have people leaving, that even at this time in 2015, we're still going to be the same number of officers. So how long can we keep this up, realistically speaking, of that, using that much overtime, not just in cost, just in terms of the toll it's taking on our officers?
That's a tough decision, that's a tough question to answer, to say, how long can we keep it up? But I can tell you this, that it's not a staffing model that we desire or we think is the most effective, but it's one that we choose in order to make sure that we can respond to 911 calls in time.
Yeah, no, I think we all recognize that a necessity, that I don't think anyone up here would prefer to have that staffing model either. We'd like to be fully staffed, but we're not. And I just want to reiterate some of these points, because from my recollection, there was even mentioned the fact that sometimes we have beats that go unstaffed routinely because we just don't have enough officers. The other day, we had a couple of different homicide incidents, and where, you know, you have dozens of officers, SJPD, at each one, which means you only have maybe a dozen, a couple dozen, maybe for the rest of the city, for if anything else happens. And so even in that situation, I imagine there are plenty of priority twos that are not being responded to, and maybe even some priority ones that are not being responded to, just because we just don't have the people power to do it.
Yeah, that's correct. We did a short study before the presentation. I didn't give out these particular numbers, but I just looked at two times of the day to determine how many calls were pending. And in 2012, at 3:00 in the afternoon, we had 16 calls pending, and at 9:00 at night, 15 calls pending. So what that really means is that we're able, we're less able to be proactive when we're behind the eight ball, and when officers show up, and there's calls stacked up that are still waiting to be answered. So it just gives our officers less ability to be proactive, and we really are being more reactive than we'd like.
In order for you and the chief and the whole team to be able to do data analysis, are those calls pending being noted officially, even if they're never responded to? In other words, we got X number of calls, maybe we responded to 10%, 20%, 50%, whatever the percent is, but are we accurately, you know, recording those calls, or some of those slipping away, or is there a system that allows for those to be accurately recorded?
That might be better answered by Deputy Chief Hober, because that information's in the CAD system.
Yeah, sure, no, anyone that, like I said, I might be a little bit all over the place, but yeah, feel free, Deputy Chief.
So, Councilmember, we look at different ways that we can capture data, and I don't think that right now, we are saying that at this specific time, we have this many calls that are pending. And I'm trying to work through that question to determine if there is a way that we could, we could record every time that a call is pending. I don't think that we could, because we'd have to take a snapshot in time every minute to show how many calls were pending. What we do record is the amount of time that it takes us to get to priority one and two calls, but we're not currently collecting the amount of time or the number of calls that are pending.
Is that something that may, we may be able to capture as we update our system? Or is that still something that is just not ordinarily captured?
At first blush, I don't think we would be able to capture that, because I think that we'd have to take a snapshot every minute to see how many calls were pending. It's certainly something that I could ask my staff if that's something that we could do, but I don't think that it is.
Sure. Yeah, again, like, it may not even be technically, it may not be part of the software or what have you, but that's something at least to consider, because I think we're not truly capturing the degree to which our department is understaffed, to the extent that we can't report, we can't even respond to calls. I don't think we're capturing the data well enough, as well as we're doing in getting the data. And I think the data that we are collecting is clearly showing that we don't have the degree of response that we used to based on staffing levels. And so, in other words, it's even worse than what the numbers are indicating in terms of our capacity to respond, because we're not capturing any number of calls, and we don't know what the number is, but any number of calls that just aren't being responded to because we don't have the staffing for it.
And if I could jump in, we aren't capturing that specifically, but we do capture the amount of time that it takes us to get to priority ones and priority twos, and I think there's actually a slide that showed that, that we see there is an increase in responding to those.
Yeah, I'll get to that in a second, but yeah, no, I appreciate that. And as far as another question, or another comment on staffing, going from four to three divisions was strictly a staffing decision. In other words, it was based upon ensuring we had the capacity to have enough officers on the street, so we reduced the sphere of influence in terms of the number of divisions.
It was less of a staffing issue and more of a communication issue, because we have the same amount of officers, sergeants and lieutenants out there. What we did save is one captain, going from four to three. What we did save is one captain, going from four to three. But it allowed lower staffing numbers, with lower staffing numbers, it allowed captains to have more lieutenants that are directly accessible to them, as opposed to diluting them out. And so the thought at the time was that communication would be better with three.
I see, so it was actually the other way around. The reducing of divisions wasn't a staffing issue, it was a way of improving communication based upon the staffing changes, based upon, yeah, okay.
Correct.
And there's one chart, and before I get to the response time, I did want to go to the chart on response, the number of calls we responded to and how it's changed over the last five years, from '08 to '05. And the specific number that I have, that is jogging my memory on this, is that in 2008, we had 103,000 self-initiated calls. 2012, it's around 30,000.
One more, there it is. No, you had it. Go back, go back.
It was one of the charts that was shown. And so maybe as we get to it, so that data point is probably the most concerning to me. What is the, and the reason why, because it really shows clearly that we, not necessarily by choice, but we've gone from a department, proactive department, to a responsive department. A lot of the other calls, the types of calls, the numbers are relatively close, but they've also, there's also a drop in some of them. But the fact that our self-initiated calls have dropped over 70,000 a year, from 103 to approximately 30,000, is clearly indicative of the fact that we don't have the staffing to do those proactive things that allowed us, for example, to have one of the best gang intervention programs in the nation, to allow us to build relationships with community, that allowed us to be the safest city in the nation, you know? And for example, sometimes when we see homicides, yeah, I think this is it, it's around here, it was one of these. Priority five and six are self-initiated, so it's number six, 103,000 to 31,000, self-initiated on-view events, as well as priority five. We see both of them drop from 194,000 to down to about 89,000. So it's a dramatic drop in total, and it just, it clearly speaks to me in the capacity for us to be that proactive department. And, you know, for example, we've seen our homicides go up now, it's the third year, unfortunately, the wrong pace, again, for the last, similarly to the last two years, in terms of the number of homicides. And sometimes people will think, well, that's a domestic violence homicide, nothing could be done, could be done about it. Now, in your experience, however, if you're able to go to those lower priority calls, like a domestic disturbance, yelling that's happening, that someone's worried about, and get to that incident, get to that couple at that moment, as opposed to a year later when there's now a homicide, do you see what I'm getting at? Like, what the difference makes when you're proactive or have the capacity to respond to all levels of priorities, as opposed to just priority ones, and sometimes priority twos? Does this reflect that change of our department from one of being proactive to responsive?
I would say yes, definitely, you're correct. We have become more reactive to calls for service than proactive. And you really did talk about a couple of different things. Being proactive in handling calls for service reduces future calls in the future, but also being proactive in just self-initiated activity where it isn't a call for service helps reduce crime. And we know that, for instance, burglaries have gone up in the city, and we have reduced our burglary investigative staffing to supplement patrol. But we know that when we're proactive in making car stops and arresting people for narcotics violations, that those are oftentimes some of the same people that are out committing thefts and burglaries. So that proactiveness that you talk about is helpful in reducing crimes across the board, so that we spend, we put that person in jail to start with, as opposed to reacting to the crimes that they commit.
So an analogy would be like, I remember when I was in the public defender's office, I'd sometimes have a case where someone's pulled over on a routine traffic stop, a gun's found, or stolen property's found, that leads the officers to a house that has a bunch of stolen property, and you've gotten yourself a burglary ring. Or having more proactive drug enforcement can lead you to a criminal enterprise that's doing a whole range of crimes. So, you know, those examples are some of the proactive things that you just have less capacity to do with a smaller force.
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, and so, and that's why I bring up the self-initiated, on-view, kind of the officers being, you know, the officers, the great department we have, and our officers being able to do routine traffic enforcement, or to do, to take that extra step, or even to check in on someone, checking on probation, or whatever it might be, the capacity to do those things that can eventually lower the number of priority one and two calls later, and I think more significantly, reduce the number of violent crimes and quality-of-life crimes. And we've already, you've already talked previously about kind of prostitution, street-level drug crimes that have gone up, and that, of course, also, you need not just proactive, a department that can be proactive for that, you also need enough units, specialized units, investigative detective units. And so I wanted to talk a little bit about the capacity in our best investigative capacity. I do appreciate and agree with the comments from the Vice Mayor in regards to the tabs program. I think it'll be excellent to re-implement the program. But in terms of burglaries in general, and the enforcement of burglaries, the, there was a comment made, I think that we've become a patrol-driven department out of necessity, and it's being done to implement our, we're implementing our maximum investigative resources through our patrol, as opposed to having a more robust investigative unit, detectives that can do the follow-ups, so our patrol officers can continue to be proactive as well as reactive when necessary. And there was something mentioned, which was contact-to-completion model. So my understanding of that is that an officer that makes first contact, the first responder to burglary, will be the one that do the follow-up. They'll do the follow-up investigation, if they're called to go to court for Prop 115 or what have you, now they have to leave their patrol assignment and go to court, or use their day off, use overtime and go to court. And so although I certainly appreciate the capacity for officers to do that, I know they're technically capable of doing that, what's the real, you know, what realistically does that do to our investigative capacity when we're talking about having to use so much overtime just to keep our patrol officers out there? In other words, the capacity for an officer to really get out there and do the same kind of work that a detective can do when a detective is working 40 hours a week doing that kind of work? And again, I know it's out of necessity, and my understanding, we only have two detectives for burglaries dealing with in custody cases, but I know it's not ideal, but how does that impact our capacity to really close cases?
Councilmember Carr, thank you for the question. I think any additional resources that we could have to our investigative unit to investigate burglaries would be welcome. But I think the situation that we're looking at is that we have so many holes in the police department where there are other priorities. Deputy Chief Morozic just mentioned the fact that we have 33 vacancies in patrol. And so the ideal thing is to restore our staffing to basically backfill all the positions in patrol, so our officers can respond to 911 calls. And I think, once that is done, then I think we could look at restoring or adding positions to the financial crimes unit to investigate more burglaries. And I think also last week, too, I mentioned the fact that we're looking at restructuring our investigative bureau, because the current model is just not working for us. And I think that's part of the solution, too, is looking at different ways that we can use our current resources to investigate these burglaries until we have the resources that we have.
Yeah, the current model's not working, because we don't have the staffing to make it work.
That's accurate.
And you mentioned 33 vacancies in patrol. Those patrol vacancies, if the academy, you know, these officers that completed the academy that are now doing the field training, once they're ready to go, that'll go a long way, I hope, in filling that need.
Well, it just depends, and I think last week, with Deputy Chief Knopf's presentation about the number of people that are resigning, the number of people that are retiring, the number of people that we can hire, it just depends on where those numbers are before we can really, truly make a decision on where we want to put our resources.
Yeah, no, I know things are changing, week to week, month to month, you don't know where you're going to be when they're ready.
Exactly.
To be, I get that, and I want to give you all the latitude to decide how to best use the resources. And before I get to retention issues, I just want to go to that slide in terms of response time, that showed that our priority twos, from 2008, '09 to this past year, the current year that we're in, response times have gone from priority twos from 12 minutes to 20 minutes to 20 and a half minutes. And first of all, I want to start by saying I commend the police department for keeping our priority one response times at an admirable, you know, under seven minutes, which I think is phenomenal, given the cutbacks we've had the face. Unfortunately, you're not responding really as a priority at all to anything priority three or more, unless an officer happens to have the time to do it. But the priority two reduction response time is certainly, I know it's troubling to all of you, so it's, you know, clearly troubling to me. And you indicated that priority two include crimes that have just occurred, involve injuries or suspects are still in the area. And I know obviously priority one is imminent danger to life, so those need to be responded to as quickly as humanly possible. But 20, over 20 minutes to get to a priority two, with the target being 11, I know that we all believe that's unacceptable. And we all believe that we need to do whatever we can to bolster staffing, to respond more quickly to priority twos. And that leads me to the retention issue. Well, before I get to that, the one comment on gang violence, because you mentioned gang violence is down 25% this year, gang violent crime. We know, the San Jose Police Department knows how to deal with gangs. It's, you've proven it, time and again, you've proven it over many, many years. Now, you indicated 11 overtime gang suppression units are used each week in order to do that. Again, and I mention that because, again, it's the use of overtime to provide a critical function, particularly when it comes to violent crime. And so that leads me, along with the desperately low staffing levels, to the issue of retention. And one of the questions that I had regarding retention, or one of the points maybe, was that through May of 2015, we'll be at the same staffing level if things continue the way they are. And I know that, you know, there've been discussions about community service officers and what have you, we know that they're not replacement for sworn officers, you talked a little bit about the Prop 115 issues, and we all know that CSOs can be helpful. And when we talk about CSOs, and we talk about efficiencies created through technology, which Deputy Chief Hober talked about last week, those are all things that, wouldn't you agree we should be doing anyway, even if we were fully staffed? I mean, in other words, those are all things that departments need to do. We need to get more technologically advanced and improve our communication system. Using CSOs is something, if we were fully staffed, would be a great asset to free up some time for our officers. So I don't know if Chief Escoville, if you want to comment on that, but those items were raised and discussed as strategies being used to help our department deal with some of the staffing issues, but aren't those things that would be helpful anyway, even if we're fully staffed, to do some of those measures?
Yes, they would, and I'm sure Eddie Garcia may have more on that, but, I mean, I think they definitely would. But I just want to, while I'm talking, I just want a couple of other points that you had brought up earlier, so I don't forget. One of them on the re-divisioning, that we went from four to three, part of it as well, and I think Jeff Morozic touched on as well, was just the number of lieutenants that we had in terms of the actual and the authorized. We had actually, in theory, if we had three divisions, we'd have more lieutenants to manage any specific watch, day of the week, which in theory, we'd have more supervision at a middle management level. But in reality, with various retention issues, or just various issues that it just didn't work out, so it's not really as we thought it would be. I mean, that was part of it, to have more lieutenants, management-wise, to supervise and manage at any given time of the week. So that was part of it. The other part, point I wanted to make was, you talked about the self-initiated activity in priorities five and six, and just one example, and you mentioned gangs just a minute ago, is that, I mean, that shows how effective it is when we are proactive out there in terms of the reduction in gang-related violence, in terms of focusing our attention on, and having the ability and opportunity to actually be out there and highly visible and being a deterrent, and how it helps reduce crimes, specifically burglaries, I mean, gangs, but it could morph into, as we talked about, with tabs for burglaries and other type of crimes.
No, I think that's a great point. I think that demonstrates precisely why proactive policing does work. When we're putting our energy into violent gang suppression, we see that instantly it works. When we put our energy into homeless encampments, it works. When we put our energy into tabs, it works. But my worry is that not only are officers being overtaxed by it, but it's kind of a whack-a-mole approach. Whatever the issue of the day is, we're dealing with that one issue, and otherwise, we're being reactive rather than proactive. And it all comes back down to staffing levels and retention. We are, right now, funded for 1,109 officers, so we have the money. We have 986 effectively that are street-ready that we have in our department. So there are over 100 positions that are going unfilled in our police department. And so as much as, you know, there's the statements people made or comments, whether it's me or anyone else that makes about, oh, you know, we have X amount of money coming in, or we have savings coming in from this, or tax revenues, whatever it might be, the reality is that we can have all the money, we can have enough money to hire 1,500 officers, but if we're not offering compensation that is attractive enough for them to stay here or to come here and subsequently stay here, then it doesn't matter how much money we set aside for police, and in fact, we're using a whole lot of that money that's set aside for those expositions on overtime, which is not an efficient way to use those funds. Now, as chief, do you see, and you referred in your intro comments, as well as, I believe, Assistant Chief Garcia, maybe it was Deputy Chief Knopf, may have made a comment or two about it, too, that based upon the attrition levels, that retention is the most critical issue that's facing our department. And given the fact that you have the interaction, you know, anyone can talk anecdotally about what one officer says or what two officers say, this is your department that you're operating, you're running. You know, what can we do, short of increasing compensation, to ensure that we can hold on to more officers?
And maybe whether the other deputy chiefs, or Eddie Garcia wants to also comment on it, but you're right, we talked about it last week, and I just mentioned briefly, I mean, staffing stability is a priority for us. I mean, it kind of really dictates a lot of the stuff that we can and want to do. So I mean, that's, however, that's played into retention, I mean, that stability, I mean, is paramount.
The last year, last fiscal year was the first time we've ever seen more voluntary resignations than, or at least in the years you're showing here, but it's dramatic that we've seen more voluntary resignations than service retirements. And so far this year, 67 resignations compared to 20 service and 13 disability retirements, so more than double the amount of retirements that we're seeing voluntary resignations. And I heard, I was going to ask this last week, maybe it was the week before, that there were seven more officers, five to Sunnyvale, two to the DA's office, just the week before. Is that, I don't know if that's accurate or not, but that's what I was told. Is that correct?
Councilmember, that's correct. They're, they keep leaving, you know, we're doing what we can to make things better, working conditions-wise. We're evaluating different strategies in order to hire and train. The bottom line is, is it takes staffing and increased staffing to do that. We cut the academy, I think it was in 2009, 2010, when we stopped sending people to the academy, we had to reassign those officers. To get our academy up and running, currently, we have one sergeant and two training officers, recruit training officers at the academy. To increase that, we'll have to double the staff. And right now, with 33 backfill vacancies in patrol, we need to maintain patrol. That's our core service and our priority to the community. And every time we need to increase something, or we want to do something extra to combat an issue we're dealing with, we have to take from patrol. And that's where we're bleeding. So we need to stop that first and foremost.
And right now, based upon the facts, in September, we've been using And right now, based upon the facts, in September, we've been using extraordinary amount of overtime to ensure we have the bare minimum of officers on the force. Given the numbers we have right now, if we have to estimate, we'll be at the same staffing levels through May of 2015. You know, and I appreciate you making the working conditions the best you can, but at these levels, that's what worries me, this degree of attrition. Do you find that your current degree of attrition is sustainable in order to maintain a fully functioning police department?
Councilmember Carrera, at current pace, no. The current way we're losing, at the attrition rates that we're at, we need to, retention is the number-one priority. And so that's what needs to be, that's what we need to concentrate on. We're doing the best we can to make the day-to-day working conditions of our staff the best they could possibly be, but at the end of the day, they're still leaving.
Is the primary reason, from your estimation, based upon the fact that you spend more time with these officers than any of us do, is the primary reason why they're leaving compensation, that they're being better compensated in neighboring jurisdictions?
Yes.
Thank you. And Mayor, thank you for indulging me. I just want to, again, end by hoping you could convey to the men and women in the department that we're very grateful for the sacrifices that they're making and the amount of overtime. And, you know, we know that regardless of what happens in terms of, you know, dealing with contracts and reduction in pay, what have you, that when they put on the uniform and they're out there, they're giving 100% to the residents. And I want to, I hope that the residents truly understand that. Thank you.
Councilmember Carrero.
Thanks, Mayor. I had a question I'm sure you guys have been asked in several different ways, but let me just try it this way, as I'm trying to understand, as we're all submitting budget documents in the next 24 hours, to understand exactly what we can do, if anything, to deal with the biggest crisis facing the department, which is staffing and trying to get patrol officers in place. I understand in the manager's budget, we've got $325,000 for recruitment, another $385,000 for backgrounding. And so with that in mind, recognizing you've got a limited number of officers who can be engaged in FTO training with rookies who are out there. I've been repeatedly told the critical path to boosting the amount of staffing is trying to somehow or another expand the academy and get folks through that process, and then get them trained, obviously, on the street. Is there a dollar amount which represents whatever it would take for us significantly accelerate getting to the 1,100 officers that we're currently, we've currently allocated funding for? Could you give us a sense of what that would cost? Let's say we were trying to get all 1,100 onboard, I mean, we were to try to get to 1,100 within 12 months. I know that's very ambitious, but is there a pathway? If so, what would it cost?
You'd have to double. Councilmember, I don't, I have to tell you, that's not going to happen.
Yeah.
Right now, we're at capacity with two academies, holding two academies, because the support staff and it takes to run those academies, the recruiting, the backgrounding, the academy staff, and then the FTO program, we only have the capacity at this point to handle that many recruits going through.
And Dave, when you say capacity, I understand that to mean human beings who have the time to be able to do the work that needs to be done. Is, can that capacity be expanded with dollars in any way? Or it seems to me, I understand you've got to train people then to be playing those roles that are necessary to get the training done, but is there a means to do that?
Hi, Lisa Perez. It's not just the staffing levels, because even if we had the staffing, we're limited by the facility as well. The maximum we could put in the academy right now is 60. We'd have to find a new location to increase that number. In order to do that, we would first have to find a facility, then we'd have to get a post-certification, which would take up to a year. And you have to have a facility identified to be able to get that post-certification because it's based on the facility. So there's a lot involved with increasing the capacity just outside of the staffing numbers.
Has it ever been the case, I know I'm speculating here wildly, but the department could participate with other departments on facilities outside of our own, where they've got some slack capacity, we can get recruits into their academies, and somehow leverage what's out there for some price? We were to find the money. Is there a way we can expand our capacity to train by using other departments' resources?
I think that if the determination was made to, first of all, we'd have to increase our recruiting, the applicants, we'd have to get those applicants, more than what we would get right now. And then if we were able to hire, select, and get those applicants, send them to an outside academy, I think that's what you're talking about
Yeah.
as an example. The problem then remains is who's going to keep track of those? We still need staff to keep track of the staffs, the day-to-day activities of those recruits at that academy, wherever they may be located. And then when they do come back to us, we need the training officers to actually train them. Right now, we don't have the capacity. Again, we have 86 field training officers right now as total to handle the current academy classes we have going through. So we would have to double the amount of field training officers to handle those recruits coming in, plus all the academies aren't at the same time, they're staggered. So you're, logistically, we just don't have the staffing
Okay, so even
in the field training program.
Even if there were other departments whose academies we trusted to get us, human beings were well-trained, we don't have the officers to train them on the job?
Correct.
Okay. And you said 86, that's what's needed for the two academies we have this year?
Well, if, basically, we should have, as a general rule, a three-to-one ratio, recruits to field training officers. We have just under a two-to-one ratio right now. So if we are taking in approximately 50, 47 to 50 recruits at a time, we're at capacity right now. You're talking about doubling the amount of recruits in our training program.
Right. Okay. I appreciate that the challenge is daunting. It's just helpful to know where exactly the critical path is. I know I've had some outside city hall conversations with a few of you about the predictive policing and what it would take for us to really have a robust predictive policing effort in this city, focused on those areas where we think predictive policing might be useful, that is burglaries, property crimes. Obviously, it's not, we recognize there are limitations to it, but I understand the department asked for four analysts, got two. Can you provide me a sense of what it would take in terms of analysts or officers for us to be able to be online with the level of a predictive policing program that would really move the ball forward for the department in terms of being more efficient?
Councilmember Carrero, any additional analysts would obviously certainly help to get, to disseminate information and get it quicker to our patrol units. As I mentioned last week, however, currently with the staffing levels as they are, and if we're to use the model that, as an example, Santa Cruz uses, you know, those officers would be able to respond to those, quote, hotspot areas, you know, in between calls for service and on their free patrol time. Ideally, it would be good if we had additional officers that could act as react teams, so to speak, divisional react teams, that could respond to those hotspot areas so that we wouldn't have a disparity. Because as I mentioned last week, if we were solely to concentrate on those hotspots on free patrol time, then there's other areas of the city that would have a little less, that would have less visibility, and that's why we have to have a really balanced approach, a balanced approach as we go into this.
Right. And points certainly appreciated. I can tell you, I personally don't have a problem with the notion that we wouldn't be balanced if we had officers focusing on hotspots. I recognize that we do want to have geographic balance, but I recognize the need to try to go where the trouble is or where we think it's going to be. When we've been talking about tabs, and I do appreciate also that the efforts to try to revive tabs, given your very limited staffing, has there been any discussion with the school districts about whether there could be any revenue sharing if we believe that tabs is likely to get more students into their seats, and that boosts ADA funding for schools? I know schools are strapped, of course, but if we're boosting their ADA revenue, is there a way that they could help support our tabs program? And this could be something of a collaborative effort?
No, we haven't actually approached or looked into that, or if there's anything else to add to that, Lisa? Nope. We have not.
Okay. I guess we can discuss more of that offline. And finally, I'm really thrilled to see the AFR RMS progress that's been made, because I know this has been really ongoing challenge, trying to get the IT in the department to a level where officers can be much more efficient. I remember back in the day, when I was at the DA's office, the field contact cards are often very valuable, that officers would have when they were making contacts with folks who were, you know, you believed based on they're wearing gang colors or whatever it might be, that they had some gang affiliation. Obviously, they weren't committing any crime, but you just took note that you had an encounter. And then those cards, because of all the backlogs, would sit in the corner somewhere, and we often didn't have the ability to really understand which gang members were where because of that data backlog. Is all that going to be automated also?
Thank you, councilmember. Currently, what we're doing is, those were the field interview cards, which are those three-by-five cards that you saw when you were prosecuting the cases. And what we've done is, we have now what's called street checks, which are part of the automated field reporting system, where officers would put that information into the system, and it's automated. There are some issues surrounding the criminal intelligence that we keep on gang members, and a lot of times what happens is that those FI cards would be put into what's called CalGang. And CalGang then has to be updated every so often, and we have to ensure that the people that are in that system have had some relationship to that gang within five years or one year and that kind of thing. So as it stands now, the street checks that they're putting into the system are not uploaded into CalGang, and that probably won't happen because it's a different system. It's information versus intelligence. So what's happening right now is that the officers on the gang issues are filling out the FI cards, and those go up to the Gang Investigations Unit to be put into the CalGang system. But we do have some capacity issues on how often we can upload those, as you were referring to.
So we have an automated system for our internal use, but it's still a manual system for the purpose of CalGang. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
And is there a technological fix that would get us to a fully automated system so that you wouldn't have folks having to input those cards?
Well, the issue is more the laws surrounding 28 CFR and what can be in an intelligence database versus an information warehouse, which is what the AFR RMS is, versus CalGang, which is guided by 28 CFR regulations.
You have to wall that off.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Herrera.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the report. Really appreciate all the work on this, chief, and everybody that's here from the police department. I just want to say, I don't think anybody up here, or rather, I'll say in the affirmative, I think everyone up here is working really hard and cares very deeply about the challenges of staffing. And I think all of us would like to have full staffing today, and we're working, we're very concerned about the challenges that you face and hopefully working with you to solve them. And I know it's not easy, so I just want to say that. I really support the truancy abatement program that you're bringing back, chief, the idea of that. We've talked about that. You and I also put in a budget request in case, you know, there's some help that we can do here outside of the budget that you're already looking at. It's already been said, it's not just burglary suppression, it's truancy abatement. And I remember when this program was going before, we really take the young person aside, they don't, they actually get counseled, and parents get involved, and we really can somehow sometimes turn them in a different direction. I just wanted you to comment on what percentage do you think of the burglaries that are happening now, or daytime burglaries that we think that tabs may have some impact on?
Councilmember Herrera, that's a good question. I don't have the stats that you're asking for, but traditionally, you know, study after study that have been conducted, most daytime burglaries have been committed by truants, just historically.
So yeah, I'm really, again, really glad that we're going to be bringing this back. Video surveillance has come up a lot in my district too, and I know we're going to be talking about this, so I have some meetings set up with command staff to be, to talk about it. I think it's even become more highlighted since the Boston Marathon incident. People are thinking that video cameras might be the solution to a lot of things, and I certainly, you know, agree that we need to use technology, but I wanted you to comment on that. I know that, you know, folks are wanting to put video cameras up in the community, and if you could just address just in general, video surveillance.
When we utilize video surveillance, it is effective. However, on a, it's the constant basis that I think that is the issue. There's, again, retention issues of the video, there's PRA issues with the video, Public Records Act issues with video, there's who's going to monitor it. But, you know, as an example, we, you know, we've utilized, as Boston PD did, we've utilized cameras at some events as well in order to, you know, keep track of activities. So it has been helpful.
And I heartily support all the technology, you know, plans for implementing various kinds of technology, including the, I think we talked about it, chief, the proactive policing, which are, which some of the newer software that you're going to implement will allow intelligent patrolling, basically, right? But I really do get the idea that we can't just focus on the hotspots. The part of patrol is having that visible police officer out there in areas where people aren't suspecting they might be, so that is part of the whole deterrent. So I agree that, you know, the technology would happen anyway. We still, or we should be doing it anyway, even if we had full staffing. But hopefully, it will help us during this time, because, you know, the trouble is, we're just, we're struggling through a time where we have less resources, and we have to do the job, we have to get this job done in the best way we can to take care of the community. And I know the police department gets it, and I just want to say how much I appreciate all the work of the men and women of the San Jose Police Department, the work they're doing out there, and especially, you know, working with you all in my district. It's a challenge, but I do appreciate all the work, the coming to community meetings. We had our budget session, I think a lot of questions were asked about public safety. It was a very, a very good meeting with a lot of, a lot of public input. And, you know, one of the things we talked about is getting the community involved. Crime prevention and having the community involved in a prevention aspect is still really important, even with, even when we achieve full staffing, I think you'd all agree with that. And so the community getting involved with Next Door, and I know the police department's adopted that, having the community sign up for that, and do lots of crime prevention, working with crime prevention, Neighborhood Watch, is very, very important in working with the police department, and even more important now when we do have the resource challenge that we have. So I just, you know, I continue to look to work with you all, and hopefully, I am hoping that the 2015 scenario that has been suggested, that it does not materialize, that we go in a positive direction. I know that you all are hopeful of that too, that we can work through these things and that we see retention issues getting solved. I think that's how we have to approach it. That's what leadership is about, trying to solve these problems and move forward, not giving in to pessimism. So I do think that, you know, that we'll get through this, and I'm really excited about the young people that are applying to be police officers and that are in our academies. We look forward to those new officers coming on the street and joining our police force, and just acknowledging too, that even though, I don't think, you know, we don't hold the moniker of being the safest city in the country, as you've said, chief, over and over again, we certainly are one of the safest cities. We want to continue to be that way and continue to work towards achieving those goals. Thank you.
Councilmember Constant.
Thanks, I think there's no argument from anyone we're understaffed. I think Osh made a very compelling case that's been made multiple times. We all know we don't have enough officers. I think it's important to look, though, at the total number of officers and keep in perspective that about a quarter of it are retention related, a quarter of it are retirement related, and more than half actually is due to the budget reductions over the last several fiscal years. And we've had opportunities here as a council to prevent some of those reductions of officers over the years. Two years ago, you may remember, I went on for almost an hour talking about how we could avoid eliminating 48 officer positions. So there's a lot of reasons that have led us down this path. And the retirement issues, quite frankly, we know, and we should have anticipated. It was in the five-year staffing report that came out in '06, I believe. You may recall, I brought it up in a council meeting and put it up on the screen. It was an exact mirror image of the retirements we were seeing. It was just off by about three months in time. So this is something that's been building for a while, unfortunately, but we need to figure out a solution. And I want to kind of continue where Sam left off a little bit on the alternative academies and the FTO program. Back in the early 90s, we had a satellite FTO program, and we were able to increase the capacity to put recruits through. We were going through a similar, not staffing issues we have it now, but a similar hiring ramp up. And we know that throughout the state, there's academies all over the place, like the CHP, where you can send X number of officers, you have all these different areas. So I guess I'm just not understanding why we couldn't look at a model like the satellite FTO program or look for academies that have cycles, that are off-cycle with our academies. We know our folks are in the academy almost a half a year. But we know our FTO program is shorter than that. There's actually enough time in a year to do three FTO cycles. Is there a way we can look for academies that are sort of in-between cycle for us, where we could use a satellite FTO-type program to handle the increased capacity so that we can get over the hump? Because if we keep having a one-for-one, bring one in, lose one out, we'll never get ahead. But if we could run two or three times, or even one or two times, where we can double up or one and a half up, where we can get those others, we might have a chance of getting ahead. So I just was hoping we could get some feedback in that area.
Well, I'll go ahead and start off, whether Jeff Morozic or Dave Knopf want to chime in. But just one comment on that, and I know we've tried the satellite FTOs before and probably different times. And actually, we're looking at now, we have actually two, actually three districts that are fully staffed with FTOs now. And I think Dave Knopf had mentioned the ratio, I think it's just lower than two to one, and ideally, it's three to one, which we'll never get to. But we're probably, because we have the academy that's going to graduate, you know, at this point, I think there are currently 46 in the academy. But we need obviously a little bit more, just in case the ones that bleed over that are extended, that we're looking to do another, not complete district, but probably a half district. They're almost satellite FTOs, but to include or further expand the FTO unit from three districts to probably three and a half, which again, it's kind of a quasi-satellite FTO. So.
Just, we're looking at all different solutions that we can come up with. I mean, I think what we really try to strive to is just increasing the amount of FTOs in the FTO program. You know, as you know, a satellite FTO is really refers to somebody that can help out as a field training officer, not on a full-time basis. And right now, if we increase the FTO program, we increase FTO districts. And then that's going to cut down on the amount of available beats that can be bitted on by other officers that are non-FTOs. Another thing that we are considering, or we have to consider in the equation, is that our officers are getting younger every year. So the, we want to get qualified FTOs that can train these new recruits on the proper way in policies and procedures. And so we have to keep our eye out for qualified, you know, field training officers.
I understand, and the satellite FTO program, I think, was specifically designed so you didn't have to take bid spots away from people. And it wasn't one particular district. It literally was like a satellite. You had people in all of the surrounding districts. And one of the reasons I'm familiar with it is I was a satellite FTO. So I had several recruits come through and get trained and go forward. So I would hope that maybe we can go and dust that off and really take a look at it. Because I think if we don't do something to jumpstart, we're going to have the same conversation next year and the following year and the following year and the following year. Even if we were able to restore, pay immediately, we still have the folks that got hired, when many of you got hired 20 years ago, 25 years ago, and 30 years ago. And we know those retirements are coming. And if you look at the five-year staffing plan, you can see those spikes are still in front of us. We're going to have those periods. And we also have, in addition to the five-year cycles, we have that extra 27-year window where there's really a financial incentive to make a move right at that particular point. So I really think we need to figure out a way to get ahead, kind of like we did when we had the Hire Ahead program. You know, in retrospect, you know, a few years ago, when we didn't need people and we were starting to attrit down, we probably should have anticipated these retirements, at least the ones we knew about in the staffing plan and did some form of hiring ahead, but we didn't have the opportunity to do so. So I just ask that we really take a look at that and see how we might be able to do it. If we can, you know, it's not uncommon when, I went to the academy, there were people from far away who came and lived in hotels. And they worked and they would check in with their department, and they got more like telephonic support. And they got support from our TAC officers. And I know that happens a lot in other places. I have friends who are officers in a variety of different jurisdictions, just like you do. And they don't, most departments don't have their own academy. They don't have a relationship with one academy like we do. They tend to spread the wealth out, so hopefully, we can do that as we're going forward. And I mentioned the staffing plan a couple of times. And one of the things that I think is really going to be of critical importance is that we take another look at that staffing plan. We did a five-year staffing plan, and I believe it started in '05, was finished in '06, was accepted in early '07, somewhere around that timeframe. Unfortunately, we've gone, we didn't achieve any of the goals in that plan. In fact, we went backwards. But it is, it was really a balanced approach of looking at not just the officer hirings, but all the other hirings you have to do in tandem with them, the non-sworn support staff, the, I forget the title of the folks that are non-sworn PDS, I can't remember what they are. But we need to make sure that we're hiring in those areas as well. And I think it's going to be critical as we go forward, as we try to get back up to eventually the 1,450 or beyond. I know we're talking here about getting to 1,100, but we still have to get to a plan to where we're fully staffed. Because if you look at that staffing plan, I believe the magic number was 1,650 or right in that range. And we've only grown since then. So have we, have you, thought about how we're going to look at that staffing plan and when's the appropriate time? Is it, do we get up to the 1,100 number and then we sit down and figure out what kind of 10-year staffing plan we're going to have? Or do, what juncture do you think we'll be taking a look at that?
Well, I'll let him get it, Lisa or Dave want to jump in as well. But I mean, I think, like we've been mentioning, Pete, I think really we, whether it's 1,100 or close to it or at that, but I mean, we need that stability so we can actually see, I mean, we do kind of on our, we're not on a downward trend anymore. There's that, we have that stability and it's not that fluidness where we, you know, we're still going up and down as we are now. And then really look at that staffing model for the future so we can then really start projecting and planning.
And then as it relates to redistricting, three divisions, four divisions, and I understand there's been talk about whether you're going to go back to four and how you're going to do that. One of my concerns is, you know, are we going to do it without looking at a full rebalancing redistricting? I know there's costs and the CAD system and all those other things you have to do. But the critical component, I believe, is really balancing the workload. You can see the imbalance in the workload and talking with the folks out there. And you can look at the calls for service. If you were to bring up the calls, the priority one, two, three, four, five, calls for service, and then do them by beats or districts, you'd see it's really heavily weighted in some areas and not others. And I had the opportunity to be on the redistricting committee last time, when we went from the numbered districts to the alpha districts. And that was a key component of that. And that has been, I don't even remember what year that was, but I, it was before '96 that we did the analysis for it. And I don't know when it actually took effect. But it's been coming up on 20 years now, that it's been since we've done a redistricting. So how do we plan on doing that, given the amount of resources you've told us it takes to do it? And, you know, it's kind of the chicken and egg. We don't have the resources to do it, but because we haven't done it, we're not effectively using the resources.
Well, I would think, to be honest with you, I think when we, if we go back from three to four, it's going to be still the same districts within, obviously, the four districts as we had before. And a lot of it was just for the radio communication, the span of control with our commanders and being proactively in terms of a manager and, you know, be available for their staffs. But I think when we do that and look into that, we should take into account calls for service generally, again, to restaff within that respective districts now. But at some point, as we grow with the various technology, for example, the e-resource that we currently purchased and actually are now looking into and actually getting to the point where we're going to marry that with our software, our watch, watch list software for the next shift change in September. But I think that has a component as well to look at the different staffing models, or at least to project out. And really, at some point, yes, once, again, once we have that stability, we can, yes, look at redistricting, which is going to take a lot of staffing and work on the front end to get to, you know, what we want. But I think it's, at some point in the future, we, yeah, we'd like to do that, but I think it's long overdue. And I forget with the numbers, how many years we should be doing it, but it's been quite a while since we redistricted. And I think that's, I mean, that's a priority. But I think at first, we may just go back to re-divisioning. And with a component in looking at the calls for service within the respective districts and with the software coming forward and implementation of them, then we can look at the redistricting with, you know, increased staffing.
You know, we went from the nine districts to 12 districts, I think, right before your academy class got hired, late '85, early '86. And we went from the 12 to the 16, somewhere around, I don't know, '98-ish in that area. And, you know, that was a 10-year span, and it was really, really needed. And now we're getting to that point. How much of that, given the high volume of analytics, can be done with outside vendors versus having, like we did then, when we had a bunch of guys taken off patrol or given overtime to sit around a table and figure it out?
Thank you, council member. There's a lot that goes in, as you know, to that redistricting. And talking to my staff specifically, to do that requires a whole lot of technical work. It requires changing a whole lot of what we currently have set up with not only our CAD, but now with our RMS, because we have geocoding on that, with all of these analytical problems. I mean, all these analytical processes and different applications, that we would have to redo all of those things. And so that would create a whole lot of work for our staff. To your question, I think, is could we hire a consultant to help us with that? I think certainly that we could hire a consultant to somehow look at the issues as to how best to redistrict if we're not only looking at, you know, I think when we did it last time, that we not only looked at where are the natural boundaries with freeways and rivers, but we also looked and went to the community and found out where, you know, if we have a line drawn here, does that somehow slice through somehow? The natural boundaries where communities usually are. So perhaps a consultant could do some of that work for us. But the issue really comes down to now that we have to do all this background work with the technology, I think that that would primarily have to be done with our internal staff to figure those things out. So while I think the answer is that we could have a consultant do some of it, I still think there would be a whole lot of work that internally we're going to have to do. And I think that with many of the things that you're discussing, with the five-year staffing plan, with this, with other things that, yes, we need to do, it's all about a capacity issue. And every time that we are looking to do a different project, we've described many projects technologically that we're dealing with, but we have this list of things that we're trying to accomplish. And to try to turn to some of these other things, it's just, it's undoable, I think, at this time because of our capacity. And I think what we've all kind of talked about is, once we got to those levels of the 1109, you know, would that give us the capacity to then start looking at some of these other things? We've talked about internally that as part of the reduction in our workforce, we reduced a whole bunch of our lieutenants. Well, the lieutenant rank is our program manager level. And that's where a lot of these projects that we previously would have assigned would get assigned to one of those project managers. Yet we don't even have enough of that level to work out on the street and do that kind of thing. So I really think that there's things that we could and should look at. But right now, the capacity to add on these other issues creates a whole lot of things that we wouldn't be able to do, just these bare-bones things that we're trying to implement right now.
Well, hopefully, there's a way that we can at least look at the potential. Because I know that not every department does their redistricting internally. And, you know, I'm, I'd like to see if we could at least find out if the RMS vendor could, we could pay them to do what needs to be done there. The CAD vendor, we could pay them to be done, do what needs to be done there. You know, the stats work and the analytic work can be done externally. Because I think that then we can look for one-time money to be able to fund those and do them without pulling resources off where you have them deployed. And I just think that we need to be willing to look for solutions like that and see how other departments that have districts and beats do it. Because I know when it comes down to it, there are jobs that have to be done, but I'm not sure we always have to be the ones doing them. I think we have to manage it, we have to be able to tell them specifically what we want. But I think we should be able to find a way to do that. And then I think finally, just an editorial comment. There's no doubt that what we need to do is hire people. And we have throughput issues and we have other resource issues in the department. But I know that we have areas where we can find the money. And I know this isn't a budget hearing, but I'm going to remind all of us up here that, you know, when everybody took a 10% pay cut, most departments saw their budgets reduced or their FTEs reduced. But our budgets and the mayor, council, and council general went up. In fact, none of us, not one office, has used their allocation 100% this year. And nor council general for this year, last year, the year before, the year before, the year before. And I really think that, much like we have our Police Department working without enough resources, we need to be willing to do the same thing. If we just took a 10% reduction in the resources that are, the dollar resources that are applied to the 18th floor, which I've advocated every single year, that would provide ongoing money for the equivalent of six police officers or, I think I figured out, 12 or 11 CSOs or non-sworn staffing. And I think those are things that we need to do. We should be able to do what we're doing with less than what we're doing in our offices. And if you look at it, our spending on the 18th floor has continued to go up every single year that I've been here. And I think that that's money we should put to more important places, like the Police Department. I've said it every year at every budget meeting, and I'm going to continue to say it. And even after I'm booted out of office, I'll probably be up at the podium saying that same thing. Because we have $2 million a rollover again in our budget. And we had three, 2.5 the year before and 2.7 the year before. And just getting rid of that excess money that seems to be sitting around in our offices that isn't getting, getting used and reducing our budgets to match what we're actually consuming and providing services to our residents would free up some one-time money and seven figures of ongoing money to put into resources like this. Thanks.
Councilmember LaRue.
Thank you, Mayor Reed. Gentlemen, thank you for all the efforts and certainly.
And certainly, you know, whether we're the current staffing number or a different staffing number in the future, I think it's prudent and pertinent that we have the discussions here at the city council level to understand your goals and objectives, right? So we're focused on this retention issue, but we obviously have technology opportunities that allow us to do more with less or be more efficient or just be have a safer city. So I think it's imperative that this council addresses this topic at least once a year, not in the context of budget, but just in the context of strategy. We just have to have a strategy. You have to prioritize what's most important. You need to let us know. You have to get our feedback. We're going to give you some ideas. And then, this is what I can accomplish. This is the resources I have. This is what I can get done. The other stuff, I'd like to, I can't right now, but I think that's really prudent. And I know we've been talking a lot about the FTO program, and I keep thinking back to the 1988 film Colors with Robert Duvall and Sean Penn. I'll refrain from the bull joke, but I think, you know, that's, I understand there's the bandwidth issue on that, but I think we are trying to do our best and retain. And I really hope the leadership is letting everyone know at the field level that this council has made offers, maybe not to what the union wants, but to what we feel is we can do, which is 2.5% this year, 2.5% next year, and a 4% bonus. It's better than what we've been in the past, and we're trying to do more in some of our equity. So I'm hoping the rank and file understand that. And then we'll find some medium to, you know, compensate for people's salaries. So quick questions, chief or anyone in your team. We talked about the deficiency in the TEU unit. There is legal to do red light running cameras. I'm not looking at it for necessarily as a way to raise revenue, but simply as a way to stop people from running red lights that end up maiming and killing people. So to the question to you individuals, is that something you think is, we should put as a, what level priority?
Thanks, Councilman. I think you are probably aware that we looked at the red light cameras in the 2006, 2007. I think we were looking at red light cameras. I looked at several different programs, talked to council about it. And it was at that time that I believe we decided, many times the red light cameras don't do everything that the vendor says that they do as far as reduce injury accidents. And they tend to be a revenue generating stream for some companies. And it was at that time that I believe we decided against it, and we haven't looked at it since.
Okay. Do you think it might be different now that you have a different staffing level in traffic enforcement?
I think regardless of our staffing level, the stats, and you can look at stats can be shown different ways and tell you different things. But I remember vaguely that the stats showed that they, the actual red light camera would generate revenue and it would issue citations to people that were running red lights, but would do nothing against the individual that really caused the serious accident. And that's someone that just wasn't paying attention or just wants to blow the red light. And that's when you get a broadsided, two vehicles that broadside each other and you get the serious injury. So we're looking more at, are we protecting our citizens from injuries? And if we are, then I think the red light cameras don't protect our citizens from injuries. But it will definitely increase citations.
Do you believe citations influence behavior?
The person that oftentimes causes the accident, I think, is sometimes not even looking at the red light or due to inattention, and I don't think that it would affect that particular person.
So the inept person who has no ability to understand what the red light is, they will, doesn't make a difference, you're saying they're going to go through it, but for the majority of the people that are law-abiding and that percentage of the population that speeds or does traffic violations, will citations change their behavior?
I think those ones it would.
Okay. Because, again, I mean, I know there's different models. You can lease and share revenue, or you can simply procure it. And you can procure it in that you don't want those types of deaths in your cities. You want to influence behavior, and then you can put your traffic enforcement elsewhere. So understand, it doesn't sound like the highest priority, but I would point it as a way, as technology, to at least give out tickets. And I would, my own view, I think, if Fred gets a ticket for running red light and he tells his friends, that's going to sort of, you know, spread the word to not run red lights. And secondarily, it may influence behavior to not get another ticket, to not get more points on their insurance, et cetera, for speeding, which we don't have a NASCOP anymore. And then, do CHP officers today give out tickets in San Jose?
They do only on the freeways, not in our city streets.
So if I see them on Capitol Expressway and Almaden Expressway, they are just driving through?
They will work on state routes. So there are, like a Monterey Highway or an Expressway, certain sections are state routes. And I don't have the exact map here, but there are state routes, and the state routes, they will give citations out, and that's in addition to the highways.
And from your perspective, I'm assuming you're going to take this line of questioning. Do you find that as a benefit, that CHP is in this city jurisdiction and giving out speeding tickets?
Yes.
And would it be, you know, lending itself to make any sense to allow them to do more? Like, hey, you know, you're very well and good at issuing these types of citations. Would you be interested in doing it? And then the city would allow that opportunity for it to happen, i.e. paying, et cetera? Is that even a reasonable thought? And tell me why or why not?
You know, I think the CHP would have to answer that question if they have the bandwidth to be able to do that. And then there's other issues with jurisdiction that we'd have to, I just can't answer that question right now.
And Chief Hober, you look skeptical, so I'm just curious, was there anything specific there that came to your mind?
I shouldn't play poker, I guess. My only thought to that was, we can't mandate that the CHP not give citations in the city of San Jose. I think the CHP wants to give citations in San Jose. They can come in and do it. Maybe you've seen CHP giving citations on some of our roadways, because they might observe, they might be driving through our city to get to some area in the county where they're going to take an accident report, they observe some sort of a violation, and they can give a ticket at that point. So I guess that's all I'd add to that.
You know, I just think it's, if possible, if they're already in the position to do it, and we, I think when you're looking at allowing assistance from others, you're not asking them to be involved in homicides, you're not asking them to be involved in gang and burglaries. But I think anyone, and my guess you would say this, they're qualified at giving out citations for speedings, for vehicle type of things. And maybe that's something, you know, if we have all this $4 million in overtime money and there's a fraction of that money that contractually, we've said, hey, CHP, you cover this section of town and just give out tickets all day, that might be something to explore. So can I get a level of interest on a scale of 1 to 10? 10 being I'm interested, 1, don't talk to me anymore.
Councilmember Olivero, I would like to answer that question. I think while it's great to have additional resources, but in light of the prostitution issues that we're dealing with, in light of the problem coffee shops we're dealing with, in light of the graffiti issues that we're dealing with, I think if we have overtime money and also to backfill the vacancies that we really need in patrol, I think overtime money would be better spent in those areas as opposed to using it for CHP to do traffic enforcement in our city.
Okay. I'm going to mark that as a four and then come back to you in a later year, when we've taken care of more of that item there. You mentioned on training employees on AFR and RMS. You mentioned that, you know, any time we do a new release of the software, it's going to require some 40 hours of training. But I would imagine the current software has 100, how would I say, 100 features and functionalities, and a new software release might add three. Why would it require the equal amount of training?
I might have said that, and if I did, I misspoke. There's 40 hours of training required on the front end for either the AFR or the RMS aspect. What I was referring to was with the sustainment team, that there's a whole lot of other issues that come up. And I specifically talked about any time that we have an upgrade, that there is training that comes along with it. I don't think it would be a 40-hour training, and I don't just base that on what's going on with AFR, RMS. I base that on my ongoing frustration with technology and that every time there is an upgrade, how much work it takes us to provide that upgrade. And primarily, it's in the realm of CAD, but it will come with any technology project. And that we then have to give new training because there is some sort of an upgrade. And that requires us, because we have so many officers in patrol and throughout the organization, it's difficult for us to roll that out, because there's so many people on so many different shifts that we have to contact or touch so that they understand what it is that we're trying to do. And if we don't do a good job in rolling out that training, then what happens is we have people, like any other technology that anybody in here has, you get frustrated. Except now, the frustration is on me and on us, because we haven't provided them the training, versus when you get a new iPhone, you can really only blame yourself. So we have to make sure that with the sustainment, we are providing that good training at the front end so that the troops understand how to use it. And you mentioned that we have 100 different things that we're trying to do with AFR, RMS. Absolutely. And it's like your iPhone again. We have these iPhones and we know how to use part of it. And then in my case, my children show me something that works better, and I go, wow, that's a neat way to understand how to do that. We never seem to get everything we can out of it. And so that would be additional training, that as we see things that come up right now, the lieutenant that is program managing this, he has a weekly report in two areas, both for RMS and for AFR, where he reminds people of things that we have identified that are problems. Or, like my kids show me something new, hey, check this out. This is something new we can do on the system so we can get more out of it. And because we're in an infancy stage of releasing this thing, there are new ways that we're learning to use this system, better ways that we're learning to use this system, ways in which we need to change how we're using the system. So all of these things require some aspect of training, and certainly, it's not that initial 40 hours.
Okay, great. Thank you, because I was scared when that was, it's like, almost like doing an implementation all over again. And mobile e-sites integration, I put a what and a question mark on the presentation on Thursday. Can someone refresh me on mobile e-sites?
So, mobile e-sites are a computer-based system where we can do our citations on a mini-computer. That mini-computer needs to be integrated somehow, or we're trying to integrate it, so that those citations can be uploaded into our RMS system. And we're looking at different ways to do that. One idea was to implement it directly with the AFR RMS system. But another better way that we are going to do it is through the courts, so we kind of get it on the backend. And then we have that information in our system from when officers write citations. We have the information in the RMS system from those mobile e-sites. Now, those mobile e-sites are only partially in usage right now. Our traffic teams use them a whole lot, and there's another aspect to e-site called mobile ID, where we can do identification of people. And so that's, it's a whole nother project, but it's not, again, this is, that's a good example of, it is not the same vendor as AFR, RMS. So we have to take time and pay money to create an interface, and then we have to have staff time to figure out how that's all going to work. We have to work with the courts to figure out how they're going to allow us to get into their systems. And so everything that seems easy always has these intricate levels and layers that we have to work through.
Thank you, chief. And then, so, but just understand, e-sites is integrated to the court system today?
Yes.
Okay, good. So at least that's done, and it's just a matter of getting this data RMS, which is a project, which, again, you'll, it's on your list.
Yes, sir.
And then a good example that this is certainly a project where it would be more of a civilian IT specialist that deals with middleware and that type of stuff to get this thing going.
There's two aspects to that. Anytime that we're dealing with a vendor, we have to tell them we would like to do this. And they say, okay, this is how much it will cost. So that's one aspect.
And of course, you have VJ in the room at the time, right?
VJ is a help, but actually, we've kind of reorganized so that a lot of the police, well, police and fire, public safety-centric issues, we deal a lot with just ourselves. And then we turn to VJ when it's something that could affect anything that we're doing that maybe the rest of the city is doing. So back to the issue of, first, they tell us how much it's going to cost, then my staff comes in, because there's things that they have to do where they work with the vendor to figure out how those things are going to get set up and technologically, how we're going to work through those issues. So it's both.
And then on the same chart was accident report integration. First of all, do we still do accident reports? I thought that was something we sort of, it's your issue, go to your trade insurance.
No, there are some accident reports, if there's no injuries, that we, you know, if we might not respond to. But we still do injury accidents, and we'd still do some property-only accidents. However, so that's the answer to that part of the question. And we're integrating that, because many of our reports are not actually part of that system. An example would be a domestic violence report where it's the checkboxes or you draw on there where the injuries are, specific questions on a, under the influence of narcotics report, other types of reports like that, that are not manually entered onto the system. Well, what we've done with the accident report is we are making it so that that will be one that is manually entered directly into the system, so it's not turned in and then scanned in later on.
And then is Bayer, B-A-I-R, is that a software provider?
Yeah, Bayer is the company that develops different types of.
And those analytics that they would provide, once you dump data into it, that's the data that would come from RMS?
Well, actually, what it's doing is drawing into that slide where I showed the three different sections. It would pull the data from the RMS, and Bayer has built into it different analytics where it's pulled that data from the RMS system. And now the Bayer system is the one that somewhat figures out those analytics.
Right, but so you need, you're pushing to Bayer or you're pulling from RMS, then, and then Bayer's going to show you these analytics. And that's, is that a software as a service solution, or is that, you buy a server and you manage that internally?
The Bayer system, it's my understanding, and you're getting into some technological issues that I don't have a full understanding of, but my understanding is Bayer we do here. It's not a data warehouse, that we do that with our own server.
And do analytics not have the same requirements as the CFR 28, I think you said?
Yeah, the 28 CFR has to do with criminal intelligence. And we start taking information and turning it into intelligence on specific people or specific groups. That is what then kicks in 28 CFR. So if we're just trying to solve crime or figure out where crime is happening, or look at the trend as to where it has happened, or to predict where it's going, it's not associated to Dave Hober, and so it doesn't meet, it doesn't have to meet 28 CFR, because it's not associated just to me. And that's where 28 CFR kicks in.
Got it. And then on the Santa Cruz analogy, where there was less teams of specific officer groups of, you know, specializations and more patrol, because they were going to the areas that had more problems. In general, should I have the analogy that a police department should have less specific teams and just more patrol that's flexible, that can go anywhere for any type of crime?
Well, I think that's a great time to put up the slide that says, "Intelligence-led policing framework," that Lisa prepared for us after we talked about this a little bit. And what you see on the bottom is what we call minimum staffing. And so I think what we kind of tried to explain was, if you have those beats that Jeff talked about, and you have officers that are assigned to those beats, and in a perfect world, we have some extra cars in those areas, so that when officers go to jail with some other folks and whatnot, those officers then can fill in those holes, that what we have then is what we call the minimum staffing. But let's suppose that even with the staffing we have now, we do have some free patrol time, some time to be proactive. Well, then we can bounce up into the next part, and that's where we have hotspot policing. And that's where these analytics can tell us, based on the trends that we have seen, we've seen that there's been a lot of auto thefts in this area. And so for that free patrol time for those officers when they're in the beats, they can go and focus on that. So that would be kind of the first level. As we get more officers, we can go to the next level where maybe we have specific teams, whether they're special operations teams, different departments call them different things. But in a large, a lot of the big city police departments, they have these specialized units that can go and deal just with that hotspot policing. So now it's not the free patrol time. So now it's not the free patrol time wherein the patrol officers are taking their free patrol time and doing this, it's teams that are now focusing on that trend analysis. And then the top box is where we talk about predictive analytics, where we know that based on, and this is where the different computer programs come into place, they say, based on the trends that you've had, we believe that there's going to be violence in this area. We believe there's going to be car thefts in this area. And so now we can have both the proact, the officers in the proactive time, but also these teams as another layer that go and address those issues. So it's kind of a layered approach to all of these things. You had said that technology, we can do more with less. I don't specifically agree with that. I think that with technology, what we can do is we can more focus the resources that we have so we can have better results with the workforce that we have. And so by doing these things and getting to these places, as we build up that workforce, we not only have more free patrol time, but we hopefully will also have what we call more cops to put on the dots, the dots that are showing up from this trend analysis and the predictive analysis.
I think that was a great answer. Thank you very much. And I think that's a, just this slide alone at a community meeting would be really interesting to garner people's interest in the topic. And then here's a question. So let's say in the Santa Cruz model where you have, or our model, any model, where you have this extra time, and so the issue is prostitution and drug dealing in this neighborhood. And typically, I would imagine, and not being a police officer, that you really can't arrest anyone unless you see something happen, right? That something's going to happen in either of those two occasions. In the method of policing, driving by them with your loudspeaker that enables you to speak outside the car and says, hey, I know what you're doing. Stay here, I'm going to arrest you. I'm watching you. And you keep moving on, and then people maybe disperse versus getting into the actual interaction. Is that drive-by policing? I mean, what would you even call that circumstance?
I think that when you were talking to Jeff about the red lights and that kind of thing, you're talking about specific and general deterrents. Are we deterring crime by having cops out there? I would submit that, yes, absolutely, I think that we are. When I was at one of the budget study sessions, one of the questions that came up was about gambling in a park, and that the community members are afraid to go into that park because of the gambling that's going on. And so they don't bring their kids in there anymore. And really, what they were asking for is if we could just have officers, I explained what you're explaining now. It's very difficult for us to go into that park and make a case on somebody for gambling. But what they said was, we get that. We just want you to walk through and make it uncomfortable for them because they're not going to want to gamble if every time that you get some time, you just walk through the park. So, to answer your question in a long way, kind of like I've been doing with all these questions, I think that, yes, the more cops we have out there that are doing what you've coined drive-by policing, or walking through the park, or whatever it is, there is going to be some deterrent to those people engaging in whatever kind of activity it is that they're engaging in.
And then on community service officers, would they have a physical requirement? For anyone?
Do you mean, like, physical fitness requirements?
Yeah, would they have the same? Would there be some level of fitness that's required to be a community service officer? Could that be anybody?
I don't know that we've specifically addressed that. I know that I was actually a community service officer in Santa Cruz, and that there was not a specific requirement for that. So that's something that I don't think we've addressed or looked at.
We do not have one at this time, though.
Okay, that's fine. And then, continuing down here, Neighborhood Watch, I think, is doing a good job of trying to, you know, we've had this program for 30 years, houses have been getting burglarized for 30 years. I think it's prudent to just, you know, just the facts type of Neighborhood Watch approach, getting people to be, you know, responsible to lock their doors and windows. On the tabs, could a community service officer be the person in the tabs office? So the police officer finds the truant, brings him to the tab center, could that be staffed by a community service officer?
Councilmember, it could be staffed by a community service officer. However, that, we don't feel that's the most efficient use. And in light of the fact, you know, we're starting with 21-7 per division, we're really trying to have them target those low-level type of crimes that our officers are having difficulty responding to, so they would enable the officers to be responding to more priority-type calls.
Okay. And then, do you feel a reserve would be, someone that you could utilize to staff a tab center? Reserve police officer?
That is, that is an option, using a reserve officer, using volunteers is an option. Funny you should ask, because we're currently looking at different ways to try to utilize our reserves actually more efficiently, so we're starting to look at that now.
Great. And is there any consideration of using a retiree, a police retiree, in any capacity to augment the department? Oftentimes, I hear, well, you know, that's just, that's the type of job I have to have, someone who has a sworn badge. And clearly, there's a lot of folks out there that are former San Jose APD that would be, that are able, willing, et cetera. So I'll just ask that question there.
Well, it's certainly something we could look into about the rehiring the retirees, but I know there's some OER issues having to do with that as well, but it's an area that, something that we could look into.
And city attorney, are we still stuck on that item, even if they wanted to use a retired San Jose police officer to do something, whether it's helping Chief Hober on a technology project, whatever?
There are some issues about the, what the retirees can do, but I'd have to resurrect those memos to, and update with the Carl Mitchell, who's our attorney, as to what we can do.
Sure. Would the department like that flexibility to hire a retired San Jose APD officer to assist in some regard?
Well, I think we have to look probably at the pros and cons. We haven't really kind of vetted it out yet. I mean, with all the other options that, I mean, it's not to say it's no, but no, it's a possibility, but we haven't even really broached that subject.
Fair enough. And then, I think that'll end it. Thank you very much.
Hey, a couple of questions. First, Chief Hober, when I get a new phone, I don't blame myself, I blame those programmers who can't figure out what it is I'm trying to do. There's usually plenty of blame to go around, including the person that talked to me in the getting to a new phone. Chief, I just wondered if you had any reflection on the realignment and the recidivism issues, local, anything new on that? I noticed the state just released a report looking at the number of rearres in the first year. And the good news is that the folks who went through realignment have a lower recidivism rate. The bad news is it's still 58%. So we know we had probably 1,000 realigned people that came into our county with a recidivism rate of 58%. We know that they're committing a lot of crimes. So my guess is that uptick in burglaries is more likely to be attributed to the recidivists than it is kids who are just out of high school because they were hanging around on the streets from working in high school last year or the year before. So what's really changed has been the number of people in realignment. But I don't know if, Chief, if you've seen the data here locally, that's a statewide number that they released. Do we have any hint yet of how things are going in Santa Clara County?
Mr. Mayor, I have not seen the data yet regarding that specifically. Matter of fact, I'm playing phone tag now, as of today, with Chief Seaman, who's kind of the fiscal agent for the AB 109, the realignment, in terms of actually spearheading a task force countywide to address a lot of the realignment issues. And obviously, we have over 50% that are currently back in San Jose from throughout the county or compared to the county. So we're looking at, in terms of a matrix, as to which one to target in terms of the high-end offenders that are housed, are actually then located in different parts of the county, specifically, well, in San Jose, and see how that looks and what type of crimes they have committed and address them, but not specifically burglaries as of yet.
Okay. At one point, I think it was Chief Hober, said that you had requested four analysts in the budget process, that the proposed budget has two. If we had four analysts, what would they do?
Well, two of those analysts we had requested would be for our crime analysis unit to help us get to this place where we're doing the predictive analysis. And what those analysts do right now is when we have a string of robberies that occur, the robbery detectives will ask them to pin, show them where those robberies have happened and that kind of thing, so that we can try to determine maybe where the robberies are going to occur, or to try to put those robbery strings together. When we get to this predictive analytics, we're still going to have that other work that we had before for the detectives, but this would allow us to do more of this in culling through that information using these programs so that they could do more analytical products. Some agencies have different ways that they do that. They have hot sheets that show where they believe some violence is going to happen. They have analytics on where they think the stolen vehicles are most likely to occur. So they would prepare that for us, but if they could prepare that for us on a daily basis, the more obviously they can do for us in that way, then the more that we can direct where we want our officers to go. So that would be what two of those analysts would do. The other two, we had asked for the sustainment team for the AFR RMS to assist in sustaining all of the things that we're doing with AFR RMS, and we asked for analysts because that's the right category for doing the kinds of things that we need to do for sustainment with AFR RMS. I also think that Assistant Chief Garcia had talked about trying to get somebody that would understand and run our predictive analysis component. So that would be another person that would be at the project manager level.
Okay, thank you. Chief, we had a couple of slides that you used last time, I think Councilmember Carter referred to one or more of them today. And I had to ask specifically for you to take a look at the drop-off in responses and the drop-off in arrest data from 2008, 2012 is what the slides are. And so I'm still interested in that. I don't really expect an answer today because I know that it takes a while to do some good data analysis. But if you look at the responses to events from 2008 to 2012, the change from 2008 to 2012 is roughly a 29% reduction in responses to events, which is not the same as calls for service. And sometimes I get confused between all the calls for service definitions and responses to events. So if anybody's trying to put this together, this is not the same as calls for service. And it's not the same data that the auditor used in the Service Efforts and Accomplishments Report. So, responses to events, we talked about some of the drop-off in the Priority Five and Six, self-initiated on-view events. But if you look at the total numbers, it's 29% reduction in responses to events. So I ask myself, well, what's the reason for that? What's the explanation? And since I don't know how the department works in detail, and I don't know all the numbers, I'm not the best person to figure that out. But I do think there is a correlation that might explain it, which is an always interesting place to start. If you look at the number of officers we had in 2008 and the number of officers we have 2012, we have about a 20% drop in the number of officers, 29% drop in responses to events. But if you look at the number of street-ready officers in 2008 and 2012, we have a much larger drop. It's about 28% drop, I think, plus or minus a point or two. So roughly, the drop in responses is proportionate to the drop in street-level officers, which makes sense to me. You've got less officers, less work's going to get done. There's no doubt about that, and, you know, we've suffered from the reduction of officers. But I can't fully explain the arrest data by offense from 2008, 2012, because that had a much larger drop with a change of 48.6% during that same time period. So I'm curious about that. I'm always looking for explanations, and I don't think we have that in the data yet. I know that we talked about that a little bit in the presentation. So I just put that question out there for one, for you guys to ponder, because I was thinking, well, you know, if officers spend more time in the courtroom, they're not arresting anybody at the courthouse. Well, I hope not. You know, they're there to, you know, follow up on work that they've already done. And so, what our officers are doing, and when you shrink the force, you know, sometimes you're shrinking a capacity more than other capacities, just because that's the nature of shrinking. So I just put that question out there for you, Chief. We can talk about that, you know, some other time. And with that, I hope we're done, but I'm not certain. Still have a quorum, barely. Any other questions for the chief, or anybody else on any of this? A great job on the presentation last week. Thanks for answering tons and tons of questions here. I'm sure there'll be more. The never-ending quest for data and data analytics, bigger the data, the bigger the requests. So we appreciate that. All in all, a good job on this tough topic. And with that, I think I'm going to declare we're done with this study session. We have open forums, last item on the agenda here before we break for dinner. So let's move from the study session to the open forum. There are two people who wish to speak, John Shepperson and Diana Bernal Taylor.
My name is John Shepperson. I'm an attorney in the town of Los Catis. You've probably had a chance to read some of my emails relating to Watson Park. I just wanted to show a few slides for you, if I may. The Watson Park in 1987, the city hired investigator and they located burn ash indicators. We know that the park was once a burn site, burned up to 75 tons of trash per day. In 2004, they were building a skateboard park and discovered burn ash indicators. Why I'm talking here today is I've alerted the city since about January that there's an area of the park near Empire Gardens School, which is accessible because I happened to be walking on it on New Year's Day, and I alerted the city to the accessibility, and I observed burn ash indicators. So then I went back here this Saturday, and I noticed I walked that same area, and it looks like people are going into that area. This is a picture going into the area. This is the trail going into the area. This is a picture of what I observed to be a new mound of dirt that's been created. So someone's digging into this soil. I saw balls, I saw cigarettes. And so I would ask that the council put up signs. We, my client and I, put up signs to at least warn the community that this area is dangerous. I mean, we already know it. URS did soil samplings, they found elevated levels of lead. So it is accessible, and I don't know why the signs were taken down. It doesn't make any sense to me. It's, we're citizen inspectors, it doesn't cost...
Sorry, your time is up.
All right, thank you.
I have another speaker, Diana Bernal-Tour.
How many, how long do I have? What's the time?
Two minutes.
Two minutes? Okay, let me start my watch. Okay, so I'm here because you all know that there's a problem still out there. I grew up on that contaminated soil. I have health issues. I have six brothers and sisters that also have health issues. You have all been alerted to the fact that there's still contaminated soil out there. I am here for the children of San Jose. None of you have responded to John Shepperson's email. I'm ashamed of you all. If you're not ashamed of yourselves, I'm ashamed for you. And that's why I came today. I came to tell you, Mayor, that you're aware of the problem, you care, you spend hours talking about safety. Well, what about the children's safety? What about my safety? I didn't have that opportunity, but I'm here to speak up for the children of San Jose. They deserve better. They're sitting, that's, Empire Gardens is sitting on the soil, the contaminated soil that the city knows about, and people are digging there. You guys know they're digging there, but you're doing nothing. La Cardo, what are you going to do about it? Nothing. What are, what are any of you going to do about it? Nothing. Okay, you don't have to tell me my time's up. My time is up. I just wanted to let you know that.
That concludes the open forum. We're going to recess until 7:00 PM, and we'll take up the rest of the agenda. Good evening. I'd like to get the meeting started. A continuation of our agenda from this afternoon, and a few items for the evening agenda. We have some ceremonial items, and we're taking up the one land use item, 11.4, and then we'll move into 7.1, 7.2, which we moved off of the afternoon agenda in order to accommodate the study session, continuation of the study session on public safety. So, we are going to start with evening ceremonial number one. I'd like to invite Councilmembers Licardo and Rocha to join me as we present a commendation to Judy Rickert for being recognized as a Cesar Chavez Champion of Change. You are going to come accept this, right? Today, we're presenting a commendation to Judy Rickert for being recognized as a Cesar Chavez Champion of Change by the White House. Judy was recently honored by President Barack Obama as Cesar Chavez Champion of Change because she's been an advocate for comprehensive immigration reform that includes same-sex, bi-national families, and she's the author of the memoir, Torn Apart: United by Love, Divided by Law. As the White House has said, Judy's work embodies the spirit of Cesar Chavez's legacy. And I think Judy's going to tell us a little bit about her experience.
So, can I talk for a couple of secs?
Yeah, but you don't have to hold it. It's okay, it'll pick it up.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Mayor and council members. I've been thinking a lot about what to say tonight, and I made notes because I didn't want to go astray. So, here it is. Change only happens when we speak our truth, even when our voice is shaking. Members of minority communities like mine have to work hard to get equality. It doesn't just drop in our laps. As a 65-year-old, longtime lesbian activist, I know this very well. So, thank you for honoring me for my work with comprehensive immigration reform that includes same-sex, bi-national families. And I just have to say that, right before I came here tonight, I don't know why, I watched the Senate Judiciary Committee hearing livestreamed and felt a knife stab in my heart when the senators on that committee threw same-sex, bi-national families under the bus for comprehensive immigration reform. My work, I'll say, could have, I was going to say, may help, could have helped determine whether my wife Karen and I get to stay in America or not. That's no light statement, it's true. We will find out in six weeks or less what the Supreme Court decides about DOMA, the Defense of Marriage Act. My book, my blog, my website, my speaking, my writing, my trip to the White House, my trips here to San Jose City Hall are about equality, justice, and civil liberties. My last visit here in February was about support for same-sex marriage. So, tonight, this commendation puts me in sort of an awkward spot. I appreciate being recognized for my work, I truly do. But my work and this commendation lose meaning without the recognition of same-sex marriage. Mayor Reed, I wanted your support for same-sex marriage in February, but I couldn't get it. Councilmember Comas, we didn't get your vote either because you left before the vote happened. I hope one day, all elected officials here in San Jose will join in supporting same-sex marriage. That will make a real difference for so many. I also hope I don't have to leave America and leave San Jose, where I have lived all my life. Thank you.
Sorry to hear about the senior initiative coming. Slide over. Want to get a photo? Or at least...
We have a photo lot.
Get into the photo lane.
Over here?
Right over here.
That was clear.
Oh, am I supposed to do this?
Yeah.
Oh, wait, is it upside down?
No, you're okay. Perfect. Next, I'd like to invite Vice Mayor Nguyen to join me at the podium as we present a commendation to DeTran for 20 years of service as a journalist. And DeTran is going to come down and join us.
Alice, why don't you come down and join us, too? We have a cameraman, so he should be fine. Thank you, Mayor Reed. I am so delighted and honored to recognize a great friend, a, and a journalist who I admire for his journalistic professionalism and integrity. DeTran was born in Vietnam and came to the United States as a refugee in 1975. He grew up in San Francisco, and his first job was selling the San Francisco Examiner Afternoon Edition at a street corner. His love for journalism took him to various jobs at the San Jose Mercury News, the Los Angeles Times, and Newsweek Magazine. De was also a member of the Mercury News team that won the Pulitzer Prize in 1990 for its coverage of the Loma Prieta earthquake. In 1999, De became the founding publisher and editor of Vid Mercury, the Vietnamese-language weekly newspaper published by the San Jose Mercury News. Vid Mercury was also the first Vietnamese newspaper published by a U.S. media company. After Vid Mercury ended its publication, De went on to become publisher and editor of V Times, a Vietnamese-language newspaper that ran from 2006 to 2013. I'm so proud of all of these accomplishments and his contributions to the Vietnamese community and to a wonderful city. So, Mayor Reed, I ask that you please present the commendation to DeTran, and if, I'd like to ask him to say a few words.
Well, thank you so much, Mayor Reed and Vice Madison, Vice Mayor Madison and council members. I'm really honored to receive this commendation. And standing here, I can't help but remember that my, my parents used to have a shop line across the street here at the corner of Fifth and Santa Clara back in the early 80s, and back when downtown was really vacant and there were very few stores around, and the Vietnamese refugees came in and established sort of like the cradle of Vietnamese commerce in Selicon Valley on the street. And then later on, they moved to the west side, I'm sorry, east side, when Ray Dalaman took over. And I grew up, and I think part of my, my mission in life was to tell my parents' stories and other people like him, people who are now either are retired or they are no longer with us. And this is really, this is what, this is for them, so that I, I'm accepting. Thank you so much.
Next, the Vice Mayor and I would like to present a commendation to La Fuerta for 35 years of service to our community. Looks like Frank Andrade is going to join us.
Thank you, Mayor Reed. I'm joined by my colleagues, Councilmember Sam Licardo and Rose Herrera. It gives us great pleasure to acknowledge and commend the work and outstanding service that Frank Andrade has given to our community in the past 35 years. Frank began publishing La Fuerta newspaper in 1978. Today, it remains the longest-running bilingual Hispanic publication in San Jose. We all recognize the instrumental role that La Fuerta plays in disseminating news and community information to generations of Hispanic in the Bay Area by its continuous coverage of important local, national, and global issues that affect our everyday's life. I want to take this opportunity to thank Frank Andrade and also La Fuerta newspaper for their 35 years of service and commitment to journalism and to our city. Mayor Reed, if you please present the commendation to Frank. Want to say a few words, Frank?
Yeah, just like Mayor Reed said, it's been a good run. I want to thank Vice Mayor Nguyen for the commendation, and I also want to recognize my, my staff, my editors, my writers, my marketing people, circulation people, that has helped La Fuerta become an award-winning national, international, and local newspaper here in San Jose. We're the first, first Latino newspaper that ever started here in San Jose, and it's also nice to be a household name.
Our first item of business is item 11.4, Consideration of Conditional Use Permit: Determination of Public Convenience or Necessity, Request to Allow the Sale of Alcoholic Beverages. We have no requests to speak. Motion to approve. I'd like to thank Laura Purvey for spending her 25th wedding anniversary with us.[652.23][652.23](applause) And fortunately, she won't spend very much of it with us. On the motion, all in favor. Opposed? None opposed. That's approved. Next item is 7.1, Actions Related to Recycle Plus Large Item Collection and Yard Trimming's Cart Rates. We have a motion to approve. I have no request to speak. On the motion, all in favor. Opposed? I'm sorry. Councilmember Camus.
I just had a question for staff. In the memo that you wrote, it said that they expected to have eight... Sorry, 10,000 paying customers, and then we ended up with 8,000 paying customers? And I'm wondering how...
I think that's on 7.2.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
7.1 is Yard Trimming's Cart Rates. On that motion, all in favor. Aye. Opposed? None opposed. That one's approved. Now, 7.2, Amendments to the Commercial Solid Waste Customer Service Rates. It's okay? We'll get back to your question in a minute. I think there will be a staff presentation as soon as we get our staff into position. I'll turn it over to Carrie Romanow.
Good afternoon, Carrie Romanow, Director Environmental Services. Jo Zintec, Deputy Director, Integrated Waste Management, is going to lead us through a presentation this evening, and we're also joined by Jeff Anderson, Program Manager for our Commercial Program, and Christina Gallegos, Supporting Staff Member, Supervising ESS.
So, we just...
We just have a brief presentation on our recommended commercial solid waste rates for this upcoming fiscal year. Our partners in this project are Republic Services, who's in the audience, and Zero Waste Energy Development Company. The recommendation before you is to set the maximum commercial solid rates for this upcoming year and to make some amendments to the Republic's agreement to adjust the rate-setting methodology and clarify some of the cost component definitions that are part of that methodology. Just wanted to remind you a little bit about our new commercial solid waste system that is almost a year on the ground. Republic was selected to provide these services through a Request for Proposals process that was completed in 2011. They were the lowest-cost proposal and the highest-ranked technical proposal. They proposed an innovative wet-dry collection system that's really focused to get the highest recycling rate from businesses with the system that was easy for customers to use. It was designed explicitly to meet the city's green vision goals. The system also resulted in the construction of two new world-class solid waste facilities in San Jose, one that's currently, that's completed at Nubi Island Resource Recovery Park where the recyclables are sorted, and the second one that will be completed in December, which is a dry fermentation anaerobic digestion facility on treatment plant buffer lands. Republic also purchased a new CNG, compressed natural gas garbage fleet to replace the aging fleet that had previously picked up the recycling garbage. This program has resulted this first year in a threefold increase in recycling rate at businesses. It helps the businesses meet the state-mandated recycling requirement known as AB 341. And at the time Republic began service, the new service, July 2012, about 54% of the customers received a rate decrease and 46% received a rate increase. We have a 15-year agreement with Republic to provide these services. Republic can request a rate adjustment each year from the city. The methodology to calculate those rate adjustments is explicitly detailed in the city's agreement. Most years, the adjustment is limited to CPI, Cost of Living Adjustments, largely driven by fuel and the Consumer Price Index. Those adjustments are limited to 6%. Three times during the term of the 15-year agreement, Republic can request a cost-based adjustment. Again, this methodology is explicitly outlined in the contract, and it is limited also in the magnitude of the adjustment. This first contract year, we also allowed a one-time true-up rate adjustment, and this is in part to mitigate some of the unknowns about the new system. We did not know, because the previous system was largely unregulated and the account information in our non-exclusive system was proprietary, exactly how many customers there were and exactly what level of service they would subscribe to. In addition to that, we... The system changed, so there is new combinations of service. Unlike single-family garbage and recycling service, there are literally hundreds of combinations of service that businesses can subscribe to. Businesses also are allowed to stop service if their building is empty, and a lot more flexibility than there are in the residential system. So, it's very difficult, especially on the onset of a new service, to predict exactly what the level of service will be. The true-up adjusts rates up or down this year at the completion of this year of service and will enable Republic to meet their annual revenue requirement based on the first-year actual data. The table summarizes the factors that are included in the proposed rate adjustment. The first one, there was an inflationary adjustment, and that resulted in a small percentage increase. Then, to reduce costs, we went back to the city fee portion of the rate, and we're able to reduce the AB 939 portion of the fee, which goes into the Integrated Waste Management Fund, by $600,000, so that resulted, a year, which resulted in a small decrease. And then, the biggest driver of the rate increase is this one-time true-up, and that was a 20, almost a 22% increase. How the revenue is used, the $54 million revenue requirement that Republic has is shown on this table. Republic retains about 63% of that, or $33.8 million, to cover their costs, which includes the vehicles, the drivers, customer support, recycling orders at the recycling facility, outreach billing, containers, capital improvements, and their profit. About 20% of the revenue that we generate goes back to the city's general fund in the form of a city franchise fee. 6% goes back to the Integrated Waste Management Fund to operate the commercial solid waste Even, this chart is a rate comparison of the current rates from our neighboring jurisdictions. As you can see, even with the rate increases proposed, San Jose remains very competitive. Of those cities below us in the first column, three of those do not reflect rate increases that will happen this fiscal year. It's also important to note that San Jose does have these competitive rates. We do offer a great deal more service than these other jurisdictions, including the extensive waste recycling services that we offer. Despite these increases that we're proposing, most small businesses will be likely paying about the same as they did prior to this new service going into effect because they received, they were in that group that largely received the decrease that happened July 1st, In addition to the recommending approval of the rates, the revised rates, we also have an amendment that we're recommending moving forward. The Republic franchise, approved by council in June 2011, includes detailed instructions on how rates are adjusted. Republic had originally requested a 29% increase this year. We did not agree with Republic's calculation for the proposed maximum rates and negotiated a lower increase of 21.74%, and it provided that if, which requires this amendment to implement. If, we think that this increase will generate the revenue requirement of $54 million. If it does not, there will be, it would add a small increase next year or decrease if the rates exceed $54 million, and we don't anticipate that would be any more than 5% at the worst case. The amendment also clarifies some of the definitions of the cost components for the rate increase methodology. So, the next steps. Republic, per the agreement, has to notify all customers 30 days prior to any rate change, and these rates would go into effect July 1st. Republic will notify all customers with the bills going out this month, in early June. Republic did notify customers of this meeting and rate hearing. To provide more advance notice in the future, staff will initiate next year notifying businesses of Republic's recommended rate request earlier in the year April, as opposed to May, like we did this year. And then, we will continue, like we did last year, to direct mail to our business customers to let them know that we're here to proactively resolve situations with Republic and improve their service and listen to their feedback on ways we can modify the program. With that, we open it up to questions.
Before we give questions, I have one request from the public to speak. We'll take the testimony now.
Good evening, members of the council. Thank you for your time. You know, it's not often I have a chance to come out to speak, but this is an issue that's so important to the survival of small business in our city that I feel compelled that you need to be informed of what the real garbage scam is in this city. Ever since Republic took over and became a monopoly, in essence, we have created a monopoly service in the city of San Jose. Rate has gone up, charges for fees have gone up, and services have gone down probably by at least 60%. I'll tell you what goes up. What they don't tell you in the rate is, for small businesses, if you have to push a garbage can, you lock your garbage can behind a gate so that the people don't dump all over it, there's a $25 charge for every time they open the gate. So, if you pick up four times, that's $100 extra. Now, that's a hidden cost that's pretty heavy. And on top of that, when you open the gate, you have to pull the cart back out and push the cart in and lock up the gate. So, in addition to the open and closing charge, there's also another charge called push-pull rate. That's another $100 if you get four pickups a week. Now, that's $200 per month for a small business. And if you... It might make sense if it was a good job, it was well-performed, and the service improved. There's always saying goes, when you raise the price, if you get good service, then it at least has some credibility. I have here a letter from the Mwali Properties, because Mr. Mwali can't come by himself. Here in this letter, he shows that, he states that price increase has gone up 55% for his tenants. Now, these are small tenants. 55% increase is a hell of a lot of increase. And it doesn't come with better service. In addition to all the fees that they're charging that they're not reporting to you, there's garbage cans that are left outside. The guy just opens it, takes the garbage, and leaves the can out in the middle of the driveway. So, for the push-pull fee of $100, you have to go push it in yourself.
I'm sorry. Sorry, your time is up.
Okay. And may I submit this to the council?
Sure. Please pass it over to the clerk, Jenny Kosky.
Thank you for hearing me, honorable council members. Just to reiterate on what Mr. Fong said, I'm also here to represent the landlords and property owners of Tropicana Shopping Center. Our building, our three buildings have gone through three companies before Republic Services, and in each of these cases, we always had a representative that we went to directly. In the case of Republic Services, we call a customer service line that may or may not be able to help us. In several instances, we've had to call about missed pickups where we were never credited for those pickups. I have copies that I provided to Susan Davis of 18 different complaints where we communicated and the other owners communicated through me on issues with pickup, on issues with not having bins replaced properly or in timely fashion, with customer service being poor compared to what we had with, for instance, our last company was Recology before Republic Services took over. I mean, Recology passed over the same price to Republic Services when we switched, and yet they were able to provide better service. We had a customer service representative that contacted me every single time she noticed an issue, even before we would notice it sometimes. And she worked with us and with the route supervisor to ensure that our service was seamless, that we had no issues, that we, if a pickup was missed, we were credited for that day, that pickup on that day. If, you know, a pickup couldn't happen for some reason, they would call us immediately on both our cell phones, our phone lines at the office to let us know so that we could handle it right then and there. It's usually our office having to contact Allied or Republic Services to say, what's going on? Why wasn't this done? Why can't you fix this in a timely manner? It's improved somewhat. I know that first year they took over, it was literally every single month, we had either a billing issue, a pickup issue, or a repair issue that we had to deal with. But we're still facing these issues with pickups that we record on camera and on videotape. And if they're asking for a rate increase, I'd like to see them perform better first before they ask for a rate increase. I don't see them being able to step up to that plate and request that increase until I see that they can perform consistently, effectively, efficiently, the same way that Recology did before it took over.
I'm sorry, your time is up.
Thank you.
That concludes the public testimony. Councilmember Camus.
Yeah, I had a, when I read, when I read the memo, I had a little tough time understanding how one goes from a 10,000 customer estimate to 8,000 customer estimate. I know that there is a margin of error, and I know that you were going through some difficult numbers, but that's a 20%, more than 20%. It's quite a bit more, actually. It's maybe closer to 23% margin of error. And, you know, typically, that, you know, I don't know. I just expect more of your division in calculating these. Obviously, this transition was difficult. I understand that. But, I mean, that is a very large hope for the best kind of number, the 10,000 figure. And for them to get 8,000 after that, I, I'm just puzzled. How did you guys come up with that 10,000 paying customer figure?
We used estimates that we got from our franchise Halle reports in the non-exclusive system, plus we used some help from some consulting firm and used the graduate planning department at San Jose State also helped us do some of that work. But it was very difficult to ascertain for sure the number of businesses. And in the commercial system, the part of the service that drives revenue is the level of service. So, the number of businesses, if they're all small, you know... So the number of businesses, if they're all small, you know, could be several times less service than one big business. So it was really focusing on calculating how much service would be subscribed to in total, based on the total number of tons we could estimate. And we were very clear with the proposers that we did not have good numbers. They all tried to come up with their own evaluation as part of their proposal. And then we looked at all of them to see what looked like commonalities to the ones that actually performed some of the service in San Jose and should know the best about what service there was. But none of those methods gave us a complete answer.
And, so you're saying you hired a consultant as well? How much did we pay for the consultant?
Yeah, I don't, I can get back to you on that.
So I, you know, I see two things. First of all, that Republic has got stuck with bad numbers and they need to make up their profit, their, what they expected. The other issue, I'm just hoping maybe somebody represented from Republic, I've heard some comments here from the, I mean, from your customers, saying that, you know, we don't mind paying more as long as we get better service. And I'd like to hear from a representative, you know, to address the service issue, if at all possible, see if we can improve some of the response times.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Gilchesso, representing Republic Services. Councilmember Camus, we took on a big project and, excuse me, we are striving to do our best, and these are the kind of issues that pop up periodically and continue. As you remember, we took on all the other companies' business in advance of the contract starting in July, and a couple of the hiccups that Jenny referenced happened back around that time. And I think steps have been made to improve it. We should have all of the bins in place by the end of June. The condition of the bins that we bought from the other companies were not quite as good as we had thought. But we have made great strides, and we will continue to reach out to folks like Jenny and the Tropicana Plaza.
Yeah, I, I'm, again, I, I'd hate to be in your place where we, you know, we gave you one projection and you got something completely different. So I sympathize with you. But customer service is, is very important, and, you know, I'm, you know, we, I'd like to, you know, is, are you hiring more people to deal with customer complaints? Or is there specific issue, things that are being done to mitigate some of these, like for the push-pull thing? I didn't, I didn't even know about it till I just heard about it a few seconds ago. But is there, if your garbage people are supposed to, you're charging $100 extra to somebody to push and pull the garbage in and out of its field, and they're not doing it, you know, what's being done about that kind of issue?
Well, obviously, it's something that we need to address. It seems that we must be doing a pretty good job in most of the city. There are certain places that we obviously need to focus on. When we were servicing the city before in the open market, there weren't as many fees and things like that. A lot of the bins were outside. It's become a little bit more regulated. But all I can do is give you all my word, and to the Tropicana people that we're going to do a better job. Thank you.
I'd also like to add that the city team is going to make sure that Republic does a really good job everywhere. So, so we'll continue to work with our business community to work on that. And I also just wanted to clarify that when we put this franchise out for, out for bid, we were very specific that proposers were to, were responsible for their own assumptions and that we didn't have perfect information, and that they were encouraged to do more diligence on their end. So we did acknowledge that there was a void in data and encouraged folk to look, look more closely. And I think one of the ways that we managed the bid process was to allow for these types of true-ups, so folks didn't overbid to cover any gaps, that we were able to get good cost estimates, and then true it up down the road.
Well, I, I, I wasn't here for part of that bid process, because that would seem to be kind of like garbage in, garbage out kind of figures, but, but.
Might not be bad in this case.
I also wanted to ask you about the notification, because you brought it up. When did we notify the customers that this hearing was going to take place?
We asked Republic to do so last week.
Last week?
We're not, by process, it's not required that we notify them. As we were moving forward with the process, it didn't seem prudent. So we did want to go forward and acknowledge and encourage folks to participate, and then next year we'll be in front of it in a more timely fashion.
Yeah, well, I mean, I mean, it could be taken in a different direction by the public, that we only notified them a week in advance of a hearing that they're going to get their rates raised 22% and they, and then next year they're going to have a very small rate, and nobody wants to come talk about a small increase in their rate. So, I mean, politically speaking, probably wasn't the wisest move to notify them in just one week away. I'm just disappointed in that, so.
How's that recycling going? Diversion?
The rate of recycling has tripled. It's 70%. Republic's required to get to 75 by the end of the calendar year. So we've been working with them on their plans to do that. It's going to be a lot more on the customer's side to get up to 75.
And what was it before?
The average was about 22 for all the commercial sector.
Okay, well, that was one of the reasons we got into this. So it's, it's good to know that that is penciled out pretty well. Councilmember Liccardo.
Thank you, Mayor. A quick question for Dennis and Jenny. I received an email today from Don Imwali reciting complaints. I think some of what you just read, are those the same properties, or are they adjacent properties from the ones that you control? Okay. Right, okay. So, so as I informed Mr. Imwali, we, certainly the transition for a couple of customers was bumpy, and so we referred them to, to customer service over at Republic. Those issues got straightened out. We're working with Mr. Imwali. We'd be happy to continue to try to make sure that, that everyone is feeling well-served. And I recognize this transition hasn't always gone smoothly throughout the city. So I'm sorry for that. I did have a question, though, about the, the way that we arrived at the $8,000, or I should say the $10,000 number for the, for the number of businesses. Did we at all rely on the Department of Finance for any information about who's got a business license or paying business license fees?
We had non-exclusive franchises with the companies that collected garbage, and we tried to, the information on the customer level was proprietary. It was a less regulated system than it is now. But we tried to back into the numbers based on the reporting that they were required to give us, and then do some field testing with some of the work San Jose State did for us and our consultant.
Do we legally require every business with its own address to participate in commercial hauling?
If they can self-haul their own waste, and they're not required to participate, they have to comply with the Public Health and Safety Code for Garbage Collection. So if they do have garbage service, they have to have it collected properly. And we also used, but back to your first question, we did also use the business license database to do some of that research. So we were trying to look at the same number from a variety of sources and come up with the best estimate that we could have. So, and, so we, we are the garbage hauler unless they self-haul, or they're exempted from our franchise by some state law.
Okay.
Which is different from residential.
So, I'm just trying to understand, I share customer Camus' concern about the size of the variance. When, did we, when we used a three-month period of time to estimate revenues, how did we arrive at those three months?
It was the accounts that Republic billed, and we wanted to use three months that were after, that came after the system stabilized. So the first six months of this contract was the transition period, and we wanted to count revenues after that transition period.
Okay, so we're confident we're at least at a level that's stable, so the numbers are pretty reliable that we're getting now?
Yes, yes. We have account-level data now.
Is there any risk of behavior? Obviously, a lot of businesses are paying their share more than their share for recycling. Are we concerned at all about businesses that are avoiding the payment and the hauling service itself, for instance, by shifting the garbage, for instance, to residential contract, or by shifting it to another, another customer?
Yeah, yes, we.
I've heard anecdotal items about people that move garbage around and we're trying to.
Yeah, garbage that should be in the system not being in the system. We have an enforcement unit that just started July 1st as part of this system, and they've been actively working with haulers and customers on both reports they get, plus just being out in the field to make sure that the companies that, if they're not Republic, that are being served, that are serving a customer are, is a service that's outside of the franchise, which is basically any temporary service, a clean-out, or a construction demolition service is the waste hauling that's outside of this franchise. So we've been actively enforcing those franchise requirements, but that has just implemented this, this year. And we have issued franchises, I mean, issued citations and gotten compliance. We don't, the definitions of commercial service recipient is explicit in both our residential and commercial agreements, and I don't think there's a case where people are going to the residential side to get lower service. We don't allow that in our system.
Okay. So, so we don't think folks are out there gaming the system to produce the numbers that we've got? In other words, we think the numbers we have now are, we have good reason to believe that those numbers aren't going to change much?
Yes, I mean, except we're hoping we're still kind of in the upturn of a down economy, and as business, as more occupancy happens, those numbers will, revenue will go up.
If we're wrong and we see a spike because somehow or another, maybe some businesses have been avoiding paying the commercial rates, I know there was some mention of a subsequent true-up. When does that happen?
That would look at the first six months of next fiscal year, so beginning next month, and then see if that times two is, meets the annual revenue requirement.
Okay, so there's no risk that Republic would end up with a windfall here? If the numbers show that somehow we have more businesses than we do today, that will be reflected in the rates?
Yes, it will go up or down. So if we get more than $54 million, then that will adjust the following year's rates down.
Okay. Well, thank you. I appreciate you explaining all this to me. I guess I would say that, you know, our experience in dealing with those businesses that had complaints in the downtown with the transition, I think, you know, within two or three weeks, most of those problems seemed to be worked out pretty well. And I certainly hope and expect that it'll be worked out in this case. We got a pretty good response from Republic. I'm sorry that, Dennis, that you've been challenged as you have been, but I expect we're all going to work to make sure that, that you get the service you need.
One question.
Sure.
If I could, members of the council, just one question for clarification, Carrie, perhaps, or Jill, on the issue of the correlation between the number of businesses and maybe the discrepancy with the number of accounts. Are businesses allowed to share, more than one business to share an account?
Yes, I mean, it's quite common for malls. I mean, there's, they're only going to have enough dumpster service for the total amount of garbage generated. Each business wouldn't have their own service. And then what Republic also did, because they were moving to a new service, they met with a lot of businesses, and businesses kind of for the first time got an in-depth discussion of their waste generation and how to reduce service. So in part, because Republic was in the field, a new service, people became more aware and realized they could have downsized, when maybe they could have done that three years ago. But I think just the focus that we had last year got people thinking that, that they could live with less service, which also reduced the rate revenue.
Thank you, Mary. So, in short, do we have an open book type of arrangement with Republic, so we know revenue coming in, expenses, or do they just report to us?
Yes, we have a right to audit all their books related to this contract. We also have direct account access to their customer service database online, the same as we have with our residential contracts. So it's an open book system.
And then remind me if I'm, if this is right answer to the question or not, but do they have like a guaranteed margin?
They, yes, they have a mar, well, they, they don't have a guaranteed margin. They have their annual revenue requirement, which is the 50 more million, which includes what margin they proposed as part of their RFP process. I think it was 17% profit.
So they have a, they have a total gross sales target, but in the end, the margin may be 25%, it might be 10%. That's their problem? Is that what you're saying?
Their, the profit margin, when we do the cost-based adjustments, we look at all their, their cost and revenue, and we, there is some language in the contract that deals with that profit margin when we do those cost-based adjustments. I think it's three times during the contract year.
So then if the global recycling market for good changes, and remind me if that's the agreement, so if they're diverting items from landfill, let's say it's aluminum or it's cardboard, then part of their margin is selling it?
The revenue requirement doesn't call into account the salvage, the sale, the value they get from selling the commodities, because not only do they get the high-end items like aluminum or cardboard, they're also dealing with the very low, low-value items, like the, some of the food waste or the other mixed plastic that doesn't have a real value in the market.
Okay, so in the end, so they take, they take it all?
Yes.
Some's good, some's bad, and then we figure out, based on that mix of garbage, then it sort of nets out to be equal?
Yes, and then they have a diversion target they have to meet, which is 75% for 2013.
But if the, if the price or the demand for recyclable goods goes down, that's obviously going to affect them and their ability to have profit?
Yes, but that doesn't go into our equation.
Right, but in effect, that's, because again, we're raising rates to meet that minimum, that top margin, $54 million.
Yeah.
And then, so when people call and complain about price to your department or to Green Republic, does someone sort of explain that this is part of the green vision of San Jose, and there's this benefit you're getting?
Yes, we've got scripts and training, both our staff and the call center staff, on explaining the, what goes into the rates and why the change in the new commercial system.
Okay. And then related to this topic in general on recycling, have the people that are in this business that do the franchise for us, have they been complaining about the level of quality, that there's contamination within the recycling, that, then they are unable to sell it because the person who wants it wants it to have some level of purity?
Yeah, this is a brand-new recycling facility. It's probably the, well, it is the most advanced in the world, so it really focuses on backend sorting to get the material really clean, so it's a little less reliant on customers putting dirty stuff or putting stuff in the wrong bin. So Republic can change equipment, which they did in the first six months of this transition. They ended up upgrading their equipment because they weren't getting the quality that, are the material clean enough through the original equipment configuration. So they did reconfigure some equipment. So the onus to get the material clean is largely on them on the backend, but is a process that's within their control.
Got it. And then if I'm a customer and I'm calling you, hi, you know, gee, I'm really upset the city council, they gave this company a monopoly. What do you say?
We would say that we, in order to achieve our green vision goals, we had to do the system. This is what other cities have done to reach the high diversion rate, and then we, this is what we have in place to make sure that you get the quality service at a, at a fair price, how we were able to structure that in agreement.
Very good. And then that would be your same argument on, or same counter discussion if someone said price? That would probably be the same thing you would say then? Price is too high?
Yes, and we were, we've been able to do our market research, and we're right in there with price while providing the more advanced.
And I do think it's a valuable chart you provided us, because I think anecdotally we keep hearing that it's, it's so incredibly high, but then we must have been so inexpensive compared to all these other cities, were we, I mean, were the other cities doing waste diversion before us or something?
No, a lot of those cities have very minimal recycling programs and different fee structures than we have, so it's, it's variable what goes into their rates. But as far as what the customer pays, we're right in there with the rest of the market.
And to the, and to the customer question on, it's sort of covered, but you know, the dumpster in and out, pushing in and out, did the prior providers, you know, if they said, hey, my prior provider did that for me, what's the answer there? Is it kind of like an à la carte service?
It, it varied with providers, some didn't charge, some did charge, but the pricing structures were very different from what they are now. It's hard to compare apples to apples.
And then, and in the future, so if we're going to raise rates for individual households, then we have more of a formal process on letting them know that rates are going to go up versus this one?
Yeah, if, for, the residential side, we're subject to Proposition 218, so we have that property owner voting process and the ballots that the city clerk administers. It's a much more formal process, and these contracts were just the regulator of a franchise agreement, so we're at arms-length transaction.
And then in the future, what do you think's the proper amount of time, what we should do the next time? And I'm sorry if you already said that.
Oh, we were, April, when we get the, when we get the revenue request from Republic, had a chance to vet it, get any questions asked, then we would notify the public what was asked, or the customer base.
So you're looking at approximate six-week window?
Four, yeah.
Okay, well, depending what part of April, assuming April 1st or something, and then, okay, I really appreciate it, and I just say, you know, on the question of the in-and-out dumpster, because I got this type of stuff all the time, but if I recall back to my youth employment at Burger King, one of the worst jobs was to push out the dumpster on certain nights, and I, so I imagine there's been this question of service on dumpster in or dumpster out for a long time, but it certainly raises a question that Mr. Fong raised, so.
Yeah, and one thing I did want to point out is, in the previous system, we did have reason to believe that some of the haulers weren't paying us the city fee portion, which is 25%. In the new structure, everyone pays an equivalent fee load on their rates, that has also likely resulted in, in some of the wide variance on rates that some of the customers have experienced. They weren't paying the city fees.
And one more question that Councilmember Liccardo raised, so let's say I am a business or a restaurant or something, and I am just anti-paying this bill, I can do it cheaper, I will get my own dumpster and buy my own truck and haul it. They have that option?
Yes.
And how do, so, so they do have that option to exclude themselves?
They, they can exclude themselves if there's, if they're hauling their own waste, they can't pay someone else to do it who isn't franchised to do the service, and in San Jose, that's Republic.
So Tom owns a restaurant, he couldn't pay Fred to dump it?
No.
But Tom could go dump it himself?
Yes.
And I would imagine that's going to be sort of a pain for Tom?
Yes.
He's got a variety of stuff to dump.
Yes.
Okay, great, okay, thank you so much.
Vice Mayor Win.
Thank you. Councilmember Oliver asked a lot of the question I wanted to ask, so thank you for that. I just wanted to share customer chemist's concerns in regards to how important quality service and customer service are. I think that especially for Republic, going to, you know, these new business communities, obviously, you know, I don't, I definitely don't want to tell you how to run your business, but I think it's just really important to develop that partnerships with the, with the business community, especially given the fact that, you know, these folks are seeing an increase in, in the service, in, in the rate. And so, but I'm also very happy to hear Ms., Mr. Chesle, you know, talking about working diligently to improve the customer service, because I think that that's just really, really important. Just two questions on the push-and-pull charge and this opening, closing charges that Mr. Fong referenced too. So staff, is this something that stipulated in the RFP or the contract that we have with Republic, that they can actually charge customer for, for something like this?
Yes, and it, it's meant to reflect the cost of having the, the drivers that are Teamsters dismount from the truck, walk over and get the bin out and pull it out. I mean, it is an operational cost...
Okay.
Compared to businesses that don't require that service.
And then in regards to the amount, I thought Mr. Fong mentioned it's $100. Is, is that comparable to other cities? Is that too excessive? Is this normal? Can, can you just share with me?
Some city, the rates are very unique to the community. Some cities don't charge for that service, but have the base service higher to cover that cost. Where in the weight, rate structure we have here, we put the cost on the person who needs the extra service, so it varies community to community.
But is that, is that an average amount, or is, you know, I just wanted to know, I just want to have an understanding, is that excessive? Is that average? Is this something that, you know, I mean, other cities charge, even if they put into the base charge?
And we can get back to you on, on that, where, where the unique charges fit in the scheme of things. I think as Joe indicated, we're, we tend to be a little bit low on the, the per-unit cost, and so some of the other ones might be higher because those costs are just folded in.
Okay, and then just a final question. So, once the increase go up by 21% in July, or July 1st, does the push-pull charge or the opening, closing charge increase by 21% too, or does that remain stable?
Yeah, it, all the charges increase by the same amount.
Well, I can understand why. We're probably going to get a lot of complaints once this goes into effect in July, so I think that's something that we're going to be anticipating. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Rucha.
Thank you, Mayor. First disclose that I met with representatives from Republic prior to this meeting, and I also want to support some of the councilmember chemists' concerns on the impact of the businesses. I really think it's important that we have someone speaking up on behalf of the folks that are really truly going to be impacted by this. I have some refresher questions or reminders from when we did this action some time ago, and, and the mayor alluded a little bit to the purpose of this effort. And outside of the diversion issue, was there another interest of ours besides that specific one? And if you wouldn't mind, reminding me of a few of those if there are any other ones? Was it solely driven by our diversion issue?
Certainly diversion was one of the key objectives. It was also to ensure that the franchise fee, which goes to the general fund, was recovered from all applicable businesses. We had seen some fluctuation in that, and I think as Joe pointed out in her pre, or actually Gil pointed out, that downtown, or the, there's value in not having dumpsters out just randomly and having a fewer vehicle miles traveled on our roads.
Okay, all right, have we had a rate increase prior to this? For this contract?
They, prior to this contact, council did not set maximum rates for commercial garbage prior to July 1st, 2012. All the council did was set the city fee portion.
Okay.
So this is the second year we've done this, since 1994.
In this current contract, we haven't raised the rate?
I'm sorry?
We haven't raised the rates in this current contract?
Well, the, last year was the first year of the contract, so...
Yeah, we didn't do a mid, for some reason I'm thinking of some other...
A lot, many customers, about 40% of the customers did experience rate increases due to the transition.
I recall some community contact on that issue, okay. And that was just the initial increase due to the change?
Right.
All right. Now, even if we have that, some confidence that the customer base and service costs are accounted for within this true-up, we're still left with some significant rate increases, but the question that I was going to ask has been asked already twice already in terms of comparisons to other metropolitan areas, and I'm assuming, based upon what you said, we're about in the middle, I think, is that correct? And is that comparable to large cities, small cities? I mean, is there some consistency in terms of which one are at the top and which one at the bottom?
We got, we did a survey of all cities with, that we can find in the Bay Area with exclusive systems. We didn't do San Francisco's rates, for example, they're significantly higher, I think, than the highest one on the chart. Oakland is comparable, Santa Clara is comparable, so we tried to do like cities, but then again, they don't offer the recycling services that we provide with this system.
So as far as the impact on individuals that we're serving here, I'm trying to get a sense that we recognize that this is a significant increase, but I'm also getting the sense that we are kind of, not complacent, accepting the fact that this is the rate increase we need, and this is the direction we're going, and we're just going to work through this issue. Did we, as staff, or did you as staff, consider some ways to try and minimize the impact, such as phasing in this increase, establishing what that dollar amount is, and ensuring that Republic gets their dollars over a two, three, or four-year, whatever period of time?
Yeah, what's before you is, is a phased-in approach. Republic asked for 29%. We had a CPA firm...
Negotiated it down, gotcha.
Audit their books and negotiated it down, and then if it, if we think with our analysis that we will hit the revenue target, if we don't, then we agreed to do a smaller adjustment next year.
If I could, if I could add, councilmember, just to confirm though, Joe, we are basing our position on the contractual obligation under the franchise, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
I was suggesting more of an easier phase-in than a 20% jump. I was thinking more of a 10% jump and maybe moving it in slower than that significant initial one-up. So I guess based upon what I'm hearing, this was as good as we think we were going to get?
That's certainly something that, you know, we, we, we would have been happier with as well, but unfortunately, the, the contract has some requirements.
Okay, but within that contract, again, another refresher question is, there was no cap on the potential increases in our contract?
Not on the true-up, not this one-time rate increase.
And is that standard industry practice, or do we maybe learn a little bit of a lesson here that we might want to put a cap to ensure that we minimize some of the impact in the future on our rate payers or residents?
It's the risk sharing, because when companies, it is a way of, a common way of risk sharing, because when companies bid on a system that's been demonopolized and not regulated, and as we try, as we discussed before, come up with a good representation of what the accounts, amount of service the accounts will likely subscribe to, there is a risk, and if we didn't offer that, then likely all the bids would have been higher than we got. As it is, we did take the lowest bid with the lowest revenue requirement, but...
And what's the risk on their side?
That they won't get the money they need. So then they bid more conservatively, which may have been 10% or more higher than the bids we ended up getting, because we weren't sharing the risk.
Okay, and the last question I had is another potential way to kind of minimize some of this impact, and the franchise fee we get that goes to the general fund, was there any discussion internally about front-loading some of our franchise fee into this to minimize and covering the, the business's impact, and eventually us getting paid back in, in out-year, so to speak?
And that's certainly council's discretion to reduce that fee.
Did you folks talk about that at all? Is that kind of an uncommon practice? Sounds a little, I know, understandable that we wouldn't want to use general fund dollars given circumstances.
I can speak to them and say that we really did not discuss that, not until really over the last couple of days, as we were looking at, you know, what is the situation, but in effect, it was not a substantive part of the conversation leading up to the recommendation. Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Combs. Not, don't want to beat a dead horse, so everything's been asked, I'll just... You look very well alive. But I, I just wanted to disclose that I did have some questions for the folks at Republic, and they answered them for me during the week, thanks.
Vice Mayor Verah.
Thank you, Mayor. I think most of the questions have been asked. I just wanted to focus in on a little bit about the customer service, for the folks that still have issues, and appreciate Dennis Fong being here and, and the letter from Mr. Mwali. And it sounds like, you know, on, on the good side of things, we don't see hundreds of businesses sitting in this audience today. On the other hand, they didn't get a lot of notice, so I think we all agree we need to give a lot more notice, and I'm glad that's going to be taken care of. But, but for me, as a former small business owner, every customer is really critical, and we want to make sure we take care of them. So I, I get that, that you guys are going to be working with Republic. Do we have any, any, do we have somebody identified that could sort of handle some of these issues to make sure that they get handled to completion? Maybe, maybe somebody from Republic working with you? Do we have someone identified so that, because Republic's a good-sized company, and how can we make sure that these, these customers that are having some issues now, this gets resolved?
Well, and we do have Mr. Mwali's contact information, Councilmember Liccardo forwarded that today, to us today, and then, much like we did last year, we'll, we'll include our phone number on the list, and then Christina is actually the point person on the city end that interfaces with, with Republic and make sure that our customers are receiving the service they're paying for.
Yeah, I mean, I think these increases are, would be pretty shocking to a small business. On the other hand, Republic's in a situation where they, you know, they've had to, there's asked to be a certain amount of business, they were, they were under the impression it would be there, it isn't, so we've already, already talked about that, but you can see the, you can see the concern on both all sides and why it would be there. So hopefully we'll see some increase, you know, economy's turning around. Are we thinking there's going to be actually more customers as a result? So we have 8,000 now, is that right? Are we thinking we're going to get to the 10,000, or what, what do we think in terms of increase?
I mean, we are thinking there will be some more customers, and then also just some more service needed, because the customers will be doing more business and just more waste generated, either on the recycling side or the landfill side.
Okay, and, and I just want to also say, I think it's our, our goal for, you know, reduction of waste going into the, into the landfill, I mean, the diversion is great, and that was another part of this, so I think, you know, kudos to us, moving on that one.
Vice Mayor Conson.
I'm not sure what's left to say, so I won't say anything other than, I know that the businesses that early on contacted me because of issues, they were resolved really quickly, so I, I think there's no doubt we can always do better in the area of customer service, but I think it's, would be important that people know that they can call their council office or ESD if they're not getting a response, and we can help facilitate that to make sure they get the service that they deserve. Other than that, everything else I was going to say has been said.
I think we need a motion. I don't think we have a motion, do we? No, we don't have a motion, so we need a motion on this. We have three recommendations from the staff.
Recommend staff's direction.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the staff recommendations. Councilmember Liccardo.
Thank you. One very quick question. I know notice has been provided somewhat belatedly in the last week. Has that notice included an explanation, more or less, of what we've seen in the staff memorandum, or is it simply, hey, your rates are increasing?
No, we did include a, there was a paragraph in there citing these same issues that we talked about today.
Okay. I think we're all anticipating the torrent of calls. I'm not sure it's appropriate to include anything in the motion that would account for that in some way, but if, if, I'm sorry, Ed, you want to jump in?
Perhaps one approach Carrie mentioned, in the implementation of the original model, there was a letter that went out from the city accompanying Republic's notice. There might be something similar to that that would make sense here as well.
And we'll get you all copies of that, as well as Christina's direct line.
Okay. Thank you for that.
On the motion, all in favor? Opposed? Account none opposed. Motion carries, this matter is approved. Have you requests to speak under open forum? We have no requests to speak, so we're done, we adjourn.